Oh, I can, oh, what's this? Are you calling me? Am I calling you?
Um, you're, I'm calling you.
Hang on, hang on. I get, I get a mute. I get a mute. I get a mute. Hang on.
Good morning.
Hello?
Rick, did we receive the survey results from that short-term rental survey?
The one that that group put together?
I thought it was, I thought it was us. I thought it was the town. Joe and I both took a, a short-term rental survey.
Same right here.
Was it a crappy survey?
This right here.
I mean, I, I always.
Uh, that's, I don't know that that's us.
Yeah, that's us.
That's the, uh, isn't that the, uh, the thing that BTO is doing? That's the.
But it asks about short-term rentals and stuff and our intentions.
So I think, um, the BTO one is resident sentiment and it may have some questions on short-term rentals and Lucy will be presenting the preliminary results to, uh, Tuesday.
Okay, great.
I think the one that you're referencing is one that, um, Tamara and Toby, that group put together.
Oh.
Yeah, which, uh, yeah, I, we got, well, we got calls about it soon as it went out because people thought it was ours and they're like, this is not a very good survey. And, uh, so.
Oh, I think that, well, yeah, that was, you, you get solicited by an email?
Yeah, an email. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Cause this is, this was, uh, this was a snail mail. I did them both. Yeah.
How did they get our email? Where, what database were they getting emails from?
You should see some of the websites I visit.
Yeah, I don't visit.
I don't. Actually, I don't know. I gotta do my work.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, we had nothing to do with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you not?
I think there, did we see the results, Shannon? Or did Eric got some of them? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he did.
I don't think they were very telling on any.
Okay. All right. Wow. Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm an easy target, I guess.
I see you're accessorizing today, too.
Oh, yeah, I.
Accessories make the ensemble. They do. I don't know. You know, Ellie said, Ellie goes, you know what? I'm gonna be sad when this pandemic's over. And I said, why is that? She goes, well, you'll stop wearing a neck gator, which hides your long lizard-like neck.
What?
I have a very long neck. In fact, I just have like one, I have one neck with eyes, you know? So, yeah.
That's not very nice, Ellie.
Oh, welcome to my world.
Do I need this or not? I'm like. Tell her to look on the bright side. She'll get rid of you every other week.
Yeah.
For hours.
I won't be having to pay for those like, uh, RV parks. Eric, how you feeling?
Uh, good. I, I didn't do that last night. I was worried about this morning, so.
Oh, geez.
Hey, Shannon?
Yes?
You sent me, I was looking for that outline that we were working on. That's at the end of the packet.
Mm-hmm.
You have that available?
I do.
That you could email it to me so I can print it up?
Yes, it's interesting. Someone else asked me for that this morning.
Oh, who?
Mayor Pro Town.
You know what? He's on it, that guy.
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
I have so many emails in my, I just can't, I can never find anything anymore.
I just did a mass deletion. I deleted a thousand emails.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, every day I delete a bunch, but good lord, it's.
I have a filter on there that I get all my Dick Carlton emails go to spam.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're a wise man, Jeffrey.
Yeah, I'm kidding. Hey, babe, they're doing a lot of, uh, work on your joint.
Yes, sir.
Wow.
We're gonna put a real foundation under that deck.
Are you gonna, uh, raise the price of whiskey? Because inquiring minds wanna know. Help to free the costs.
Can I have to do something to pay for that thing?
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah. No, we, we kinda had to go down to dirt and start from scratch.
I asked Dick if he found any gold doubloons under there.
More likely bindles.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Dennis. How are you?
Good, good.
Where are you today?
I'm over in the Grand River Valley.
Nice.
Visiting, visiting friends.
I, I saw Dennis at the peninsula riding a mountain bike with a dog on the leash, like he's one hand on the handlebars, one hand under his dog on his leash, pretty much trolling for a compound fracture.
It didn't happen.
I know. I was worried about you, though.
That was like old home week. That was, uh, Scott, Vander Scoff.
Feiya.
Feiya, all those.
Reed, yeah.
All those kids from Breckenridge showed up.
All the young, youngsters.
Eric, when do you get out your sling?
Uh, three and a half weeks. So six weeks total. Which seems to be forever, because this thing, I have, I'm sleeping in this also and it's, it's super uncomfortable.
Oh, oh, I can imagine, God.
But it's feeling pretty good, so.
Are you able to get on your, uh, spin bike?
Yeah, I've been riding at home a bunch.
If that doesn't hurt, that's, you're okay with that?
No, I got, I have a different sling I use for that. He's letting me, uh.
Yeah.
He's letting me, uh, put a, put a lighter sling on.
Yeah.
I did it in this one the first day and it was so sweaty, it was terrible.
Yeah, I, I had that exact, I broke my show. I had that exact same sling. It was awful.
There, you know, it's so, I mean, it's well-designed, obviously, but it's, there's a, there's a round metal connector in the back that's just aggravated my back so badly. I don't know why they can't invent something else. Doesn't seem like it's that big of a.
Probably just not covered with your, uh, your HMO.
Well, you know.
I, I think, um, Helen signed you up for veterinary insurance. So if you're, if you, uh, get hip dysplasia, you're set, but.
Totally go see a vet.
Yeah.
Shannon, thanks for sending that. All right.
Problem.
Okay, is everybody here? One, two, three, four? Who are we missing? Kelly? We're expecting her, right?
Yeah, you know, those kids probably interviewed.
There she comes. She might be in labor.
Let me give her one more minute and then we'll get started.
She's here.
Did Ruby help you get on this morning, Kelly?
Mm-hmm. I had to help Ruby get to Little Red before, which also opens at eight o'clock.
Ah, yes.
Alrighty then, uh, let's, uh, let's get started here with, uh, I'm gonna call to order town council special meeting for, uh, eighteenth of May at eight AM. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for joining us if you, if you're out there. Um, we're gonna roll call, please. Helen?
Ms. Jello.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, and, uh, so everybody in their package has gotten some discussion items for the morning. We're gonna start with the housing, uh, housing goals and units developed, but before that, the, you know, the last page of that second grouping of things is a little bit of an outline that we put together, um, about our housing strategies. And I'd like to sort of go in that order, so we'll start with, you know, continuing a robust town-sponsored local housing creation campaign. You know, I, I know a lot of, um, a, as we've talked about this, you know, STRs get thrown around a lot, a lot, and that is just one portion of what we're trying to resolve. Really, the overarching, um, issue is how do we house our community? How do we house not only our workers, but our locals and people that wanna live here? How do we keep the soul of our community intact? How do we not become a place where you can't live here and you have to drive in to work and then you leave? That, that's really, in the end, the, the primary goal is to keep, um, keep Breckenridge, you know, what, what it is. And we'll, we'll never go back to when Jeffrey first moved here and everybody could live wherever they want, everybody knew everybody. You know, things obviously change as time goes on, but it is really important that we, as a council, tackle this. And I know there's been a lot of pushback and a lot of, you know, angry letters, but there's also been people that totally agree with what we're doing. I've received, you know, a lot of comments, a lot of phone calls that this is really important to probably a vast majority of the people who live in this community, that we retain what we have in this community. So, that being said, we will turn it over to Lori Best.
Kelly had a comment.
Can I just say one thing? Because I just wanna remind people why we are doing this and why we know that it is, um, what the community wants. And that's because we're following the destination management plan, which has four very clear, um, visionary state, or I guess one visionary statement and four strategic goals about a balanced year-round economy, elevate and fiercely protect Breckenridge's authentic character and brand, more boots and bikes, less cars, fewer cars, Aaron, and establish Breck as an environmental stewardship and sustainable practice, um, community. So I just, you know, I think it's really important to remember, not only are we hearing people who want us to regulate and people who don't want us to regulate, but there was a much broader community process that had thousands of people involved in creating it. And that's why we're continuing to try to, you know, get to a place where there's harmony between tourists and their quality of experience and residents and, um, our quality of life. So it's not something that the council is just excited about starting up this conversation, but we were directed by the community.
Well said. You should be the mayor pro town.
Jeffrey's too good. I would never wanna take that from him.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Uh, Lori, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, first thing I'm gonna do is, uh, try to share my screen because I prepared a PowerPoint that I, uh, let's host-disabled participant screen sharing. Uh, let's see, Chris, are you out there to?
It's, it's Helen. Let me, let me do it.
Okay, sorry.
There you are.
Thank you. All right, um, yay, success. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. Um, so, um, are you guys ready? I mean, this, this is exciting. Um, I, I really do appreciate the opportunity to, to provide some background on the housing program. As you know, I've been working this program for over twenty years, I think twenty years in July. Um, so there's a lot of information and, um, you know, probably better suited to like a, a book or a report or publication of some kind, but, um, I'm gonna, uh, you know, I think this background is super important to, um, inform the conversation about housing policies and community character and, um, so, you know, thank you for the time and try to move along through these slides and, and keep it sort of interesting and engaging and hopefully, um, you'll come away with, um, a better understanding or remember some of the things that we're doing around housing. You know, as you all know, it's not a new problem. Um, I think it, um, came to light particularly in the eighties and nineties, um, as our tourism-based economy really, um, you know, started to expand and, um, we always knew we sort of needed that balance between sort of vacation homes and then the resident occupied sort of workforce housing. It does feel a bit more daunting, um, post-COVID, um, especially, you know, with greater demand for second homes and vacation homes with the changes in demographics and the tech, technology that kind of changes the nature of jobs and where people can live and where people can work. You know, in a nutshell, um, this is the results of the, uh, most recent, uh, needs assessment. That was also pre-COVID, but just barely pre-COVID, um, identified a need for, you know, almost twelve hundred units, and that's just in the upper blue. It's thirty-five hundred units if you look county-wide. Um, to make it more challenging, the majority of that need is, is low AMI rentals. So that's, you know, a two-bedroom unit that rents for eighteen hundred dollars a month, something about like that. Um, you know, in addition, the needs assessment was pretty clear, um, about sort of, um, commuting patterns and how that's impacting, um, sort of the percent of jobs in each basin that are filled by basin residents. Um, and, you know, particular concern, obviously, in the upper blue, where the percent of jobs that are filled by people that live in the upper blue, um, has decreased from, you know, forty percent of the jobs um, in two thousand and ten to only twenty-seven percent of the jobs in twenty seventeen. So that's jobs that are filled by people that live in the basin where the job is located.
Lori?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify. When you say that we need twelve hundred units, what met, what metric are you gauging that against? Is that to get to our fifty percent live and work here, or is that the demand? How are people who, who are stating that they, they need units? How is that measured?
What they look at is they look at a, a balance of housing and jobs, um, and, and to, to fill the jobs, you, you would need twelve hundred additional units here. Um, that, that's recognizing that there are always going to be some people that choose not to live in the basin where they work for whatever reason. And to tell you the truth, I'm not sure what the, um, assumption is in terms of folks that live out of the basin that choose to, um, commute in. But if each basin were to take care of their own, um, jobs, you know, we'd need twelve hundred. We, we realize there's gonna be people that, for lifestyle or whatever, choose to live somewhere else.
But Lori, when you say twelve hundred, would, are you saying twelve hundred to bring, keep the level at forty-seven to fifty percent of residents living in the community? Or would that be a hundred percent of the residents living in the community?
You know, I'll, I'll.
Live out of the community.
Yeah, I, I do need to check with EPS to see the methodology, whether it's to maintain our forty-seven percent or whether it's to hit every single job. So let me check before I, I answer that. Um, challenges, um, it's a long list of challenges. Um, you know, demand is, uh, is obviously just outpacing supply, um, is the bottom line. A lot of reasons for that, you know, proximity to Denver, that's a, um, a blessing and a curse. Loss of units for a variety of reasons, and we're gonna go into some of those numbers, um, later in this PowerPoint. Um, yeah, demographics, aging, retiring, uh, workforce, um, you know, just recently, we've seen a lot of, um, locals that have been here a long time. And, you know, opting to sort of cash out and move on to whatever's next. And, you know, it's about priorities. I think some of that came out of COVID. Uh, but there certainly are demographic trends that are, um, impacting, um, sort of that loss of units. Remote jobs, I don't think anybody would have anticipated how technology would change, um, where people can live and work and creates these location-neutral, um, opportunities for people. They can live wherever they want. It's driving migration to small towns, you know, everywhere, and the towns that were once considered pretty remote, uh, you know, are seeing, um, the, the remote workers, um, you know, obviously relocating and migrating to those kinds of communities where everybody wants to live. Cost increasing, um, not a surprise. We'll go into more details about that. You know, as we add more units, and we really have added a lot of units, um, well, since I've been here, I, I think it's about a thousand units. We, on average, about forty-four units a year on average. And, you know, that kind of increase in inventory and the complexity of the deed restrictions is just, um, taxing us in terms of being able to manage, administer, ensure compliance. The data, the data is all, just all over the place. Some of it's specific to the town of Breck, some of it's specific to the upper blue. And, you know, things, there, there are some sources of data that are readily available, um, but when we start to look at sort of commuting throughout the county, a lot of that can only be really determined by surveys. So, you know, and how our housing inventory is utilized, um, some of that is just really, um, requires surveys as, as what, opposed to finding some data source out there that's reliable and available regularly. Aging inventory, both on the sort of deed-restricted side of things and on the market rate side of things. So that's a challenge, um, that our housing inventory is, um, facing. Funding, um, everything's more expensive, much more expensive to build new supply, more expensive to acquire deed restrictions. We'll go a little bit into that later. Land constraints, we basically are a very, um, small town surrounded by national forests, um, steep slopes, unbuildable land, um, so there's just limited supply of land where we could build if we, um, decided to do that. Um, and, you know, like any, any resort community, probably one of the biggest challenges is all of the competing priorities. I mean, we, we have to, um, you know, uh, value, uh, what draws people here. And, you know, that is our small-time character. It's our open space. It's our natural features and the amenities. And, you know, that's what draws people here and super important to retain. And so, um, we're always dealing with finding that right balance, um, capacity of the basin, um, you know, whether that's roads, parking, uh, water, sewer. Just, uh, always a challenge in small towns in terms of, um, trying to make the, the decisions to balance that, uh, that resource, which is basically land. See if I can get my slides to progress. Stuck on this slide for some reason. It's a good slide to be stuck on, I guess. I might have to restart my slideshow. Darn it.
The challenges persist.
I tell you.
Children watching that could help you out here?
I'll call Ruby.
You turn the garage.
Let me exit and see if I can restart it. Sorry. I'm completely locked up. All right, see if this works. Right on. Um, so demand slow, um, is growing faster than supply. And, you know, we've been tracking this. Um, you know, and, and despite sort of, you know, adding hundreds of units, um, you know, the gap keeps growing. You know, the, the trends that are driving the demand have changed a bit over time. You know, initially, back in two thousand and six, it was really about new jobs. Um, you know, we, the, the community and the economy were developing and it was just new jobs, creating new employees, creating the demand for new housing for those employees. But, um, in two thousand and thirteen, the needs assessment first identified the issue of loss of units and replacement units as one of the key drivers, um, going forward. And obviously, that turned out to be true, the loss of units to, you know, retirees, to locals cashing out, units converting from resident occupied to vacation occupied. So, um, that trend was identified in our needs assessment two thousand and thirteen as something that really was gonna, um, rise to a level that, where the, um, demand for housing driven by the loss of units actually was exceeding the demand for housing, um, based on new jobs. Loss of supply, a lot of reasons, um, but these numbers are alarming. Um, you know, the resident occupied units, um, ratio to vacation, um, or vaca, um, vacant units, um, in two thousand and ten, thirty-seven percent of the inventory of housing was resident occupied. By two thousand and eighteen, that had dropped to twenty-nine percent. Um, and of note, um, you know, during that period of time from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eighteen, we actually added three hundred and sixty deed-restricted resident occupied units. So, um, while we actually, you know, lost, um, five hundred and ninety-one units, that's in addition to three hundred and sixty restricted units that we actually added. So tremendous loss of resident occupied units, um, just in those eight years. And, you know, that's exactly, um, what that two thousand and thirteen needs assessment sort of identified as a issue. You know, even if we hadn't been losing resident occupied units, um, which unfortunately we were, um, you know, the competition for those resident occupied units has changed. And the utilization of the vacation homes has changed. Um, you know, in the early sort of phases of our, you know, development of our tourism-based economy, you know, there were really, you know, two groups competing for those, um, the housing inventory. It was, it was resident occupied units, which was, you know, employees, you know, there were a few Breck families here that had been here forever. Um, and a few people that somehow found their way up to Breckenridge and ended up staying. Um, and then there were the vacation homes and they were typically occupied just very seasonally. They were dark. I mean, I remember when, um, I first got here and the big concern was keeping the lights on because we had so much inventory that just set dark. You know, with the new trends, um, you know, the competition for those resident occupied units is now not. You know, the competition for those resident occupied units is now not just the employees. And, you know, a few long term locals, it's it's remote workers. It's the local workforce, and then it's retirees who are staying in the community, living full time. But taking up those resident occupied units. The nature of the vacation homes has also changed. You know, it used to be vacation homes, like I mentioned, that were dark. We have some of those, but now we also have the short term rentals. Which keep the lights on in those vacation homes, but they're just definitely changing the character of and the nature of the vacation homes. Where they're just more accessible to everybody. And so the occupancy is significantly more than it used to be. And, you know, the not not to say that short term rentals are responsible for our housing issues, but they're particularly impactful. On our housing inventory and our gaps, because especially if they're moving into traditionally local neighborhoods. Because it's sort of a double whammy. They act like a business in that they create jobs. And by creating jobs, they put additional demand on our workforce housing. And if they're moving into our neighborhoods, they're also actually impacting the supply of our housing if they are. Long term housing that got converted to a short term house. So it's kind of a double whammy, but and and sort of unique in terms of other businesses. We're getting into a little bit of the challenges, cost of new construction, you know, as we've been. Building more units and and really sort of keeping the pedal to the metal in terms of trying to produce more supply. You know, we've kind of learned really what it takes. It takes. A lot of funding, it it takes land and it takes time. So these are all challenges with the new construction. And in my mind, why it's almost impossible to think that we can build our way out of this. If there were enough land. There's still not enough funding. I think I calculated, you know, based on what our projected need is right now. And, you know, that need for almost twelve hundred units is really right now. It doesn't assume any future additional need down the road. But, you know, at twelve hundred units, you know, potentially that's over five hundred million dollars or somewhere in that neighborhood to actually try to build our way out of this. But we've we've learned a lot. We've done a lot of new construction. And and managed it. And, you know, it varies depending on, you know, the type or density, the size of the units that you're building. You know, our lowest units cost us a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars a unit to produce. And our more expensive units have cost us up around three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to produce. And, you know, post COVID, we've already seen that these prices are probably up about thirty four percent. And that's just based on, that's actually based on true bids for true projects. So. Clearly, the sort of cost, the need for land is a challenge with new construction. Timing. You might remember that, you know, the first Wellington units came online in two thousand. And I think that neighborhood was finally built out in two thousand and twenty, so twenty years for that neighborhood to come online. Other projects, we, the town completed the Pinewood two apartments down on Airport Road. Some of you may recall that was a Forest Service land trade. Those are not quick. It's almost, you know, you gotta really think that this is not a sort of immediate solution. It's important to have projects in your pipeline. But the time and the money in the land are clearly challenges with trying to increase the supply with just new construction. Which is why we really have been working hard to preserve some of that inventory that's already out there, particularly the inventory that traditionally served our workforce. Trying to convert. Some vacation homes back into resident occupied units. In the last couple of years, I think we've acquired thirty six deed restriction deed restrictions on existing units through sort of buying the unit and putting a deed restriction on it. Or working with the owner to compensate them for accepting a deed restriction on their property. It's been really effective at converting units and at preserving neighborhoods where locals. Have concerned have expressed concern about conversion to vacation homes.
Laurie, can I ask a quick question on buy downs and housing helps? Wondering, are they with those two programs? Are we typically protecting existing workforce housing? Or are we converting what was previously maybe a vacation home, a short term rental, and then deed restricting it?
Right now, the trend has been exist, well, existing owners primarily. We we use the Housing Helps program to help buyers with a down payment to acquire a unit. So in those situations, the unit was for sale. And the buyer used Housing Helps so that they could acquire the unit. So those units were definitely at risk of converting to short term. In the Housing Helps program, I think it's probably about eighty percent current owner and maybe twenty percent. Unit that was for sale that we acquired. In the buy downs, almost all of those are preventing it from converting. Because the buy down means that that unit was for sale. And if we hadn't bought it, it was very likely going to convert to short term rental. Hopefully, that answers your question. It's it's interesting with the buy downs, we are typically acquiring the smaller units, the one bedroom units, and these are in some of those older complexes. And with housing helps, it's been interesting because it's a lot of the. A lot bigger homes, three and four bedroom homes. Which really means the cost per bedroom has been very affordable. To acquire the deed restrictions on those larger homes. We've got a few. With Housing Helps, the larger homes kind of. Some in sort of the Warriors Mark area, some in the Blue River area. So that's been really nice. The the buy downs are typically the older inventory that's in town. Now, clearly, the cost to acquire these deed restrictions, either through buy downs or through housing helps, is going to continue to increase. Because, you know, what I used to think was a ridiculous price to pay is now become the normal price to pay. So we have to think about that as we go forward.
Laurie, a couple of things. Do we have a formula about how much, say, per bedroom would have to incentivize? A current short term landlord to convert it to a long term? I'm guessing it'd be different in the Highlands compared to, you know, now Colorado. But do do we have that? And is it all feasible? And 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 then my my next question is, that's your suggestion. Maybe for some people watching, they might not know exactly what housing help is and what buy downs are. But but answer the first one first, if you would, just because I'll forget the question.
I forgot it already. No. I think, I mean, yeah, there's there's a way to get it, get to, you know. What that number is, you know, it's going to constantly change as values go up or down. And as the demand for short term rentals changes over time. I mean, I think you gotta look at what what an owner can generate through short term rental per bedroom. And then just figure out, you know, what you need to do to try to beat that. But it's going to vary by the type of the unit, the location of the unit. And as Kelly once said, you know, we're the whole town of Breck is beachfront now, you know, it really is. You know, it used to be. You know, and it it still applies if you're right on this, on the on the. In at the ski area, it's going to be different than you're at four years past. But, you know, Breckenridge is a unique market, and I'm sure you could get to the number just by looking at what the revenue generated is. Go ahead.
I just wonder if we could, you know, I I know we're gonna probably talk about solutions or possible suggestions later. But I wondered if we could produce a program, it would have to be like a three to five year commitment. You know, say to someone with a gold camp unit. Okay, we're going to give you X amount per month, twelve months a year, and no one's gonna, you know, less people are gonna be renting in May. If you could, and we'll do that for three years, you know, because because then the vagueness of the market could change. And it might be even more enticing in three years or less enticing. So they they can opt out in three to five years. But I wonder if that would be as or more cost effective. And and then I'll leave you with that, but also kind of tell us what housing help is.
Laurie, before you jump into there, Jeffrey, we're, there's already a committee working on exactly what you're talking about. And when we get to strategies, though, we'll go into more detail. And we have, we have gotten some examples and numbers from management companies to show the gaps and. And what it could be on a one bedroom, two bedroom for a lot, short term to long term. So we have examples of that.
Wow, okay, good.
Yeah, when we get to next steps, I think it's like slide twenty something. You know, we do talk about. You know, temporary. Temporary strategies and strategies that will protect our inventory in perpetuity. And, you know, most of our focus has always been on protecting the inventory in perpetuity because it just gets more and more and more expensive. And this problem's not going away in two or three or four or five or twenty years. So when somebody asks me, do you prefer permanent or temporary? I'm always gonna answer permanent, although there are situations where we need some sort of emergency and urgent response. But we can talk about that next steps. So buy downs, that's basically where we actually acquire properties. And. Usually, you know, right nowadays, there's a lot of competition for anything that comes on the market that's sort of in our sort of price range. And but whenever possible, we attempt to buy down, buy properties and then place a deed restriction on those properties. And then sell them at a reduced price that's affordable with that deed restriction. The Housing Helps is where we we pay owners of current properties. Or we provide help to somebody that wants to buy a property that's currently a market rate property. And. In return for the payment, they agree to accept the deed restriction on the property. And these are deed restriction lights. It's a great program that has helped a lot of people. The restriction just requires that the occupant be working locally for a business that's located in and serving the county. It's it's really an incentive based program to help people get into housing or to help current owners. Who own their property, want to see it stay local, they're not quite sure when they're going to sell it. But they might want to make some improvements to their home. They might need to pay a special assessment. So it helps locals stay in their unit. And in the long term, it helps us ensure that that unit doesn't flip to a vacation home when they sell. Challenge, you know, we talked a little bit about this under new construction. You're always trained to figure out where 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 do you, you know, how do you balance the limited funds? And how do you balance the limited land? You know, we are stewards of a really pretty special place. So have a responsibility to kind of balance all of the prior priorities, you know, to take care of the environment, to take care of the locals, to take care of the visitors. To allocate, you know, the public resources in a fair and equitable way. And and that's one of the responsibilities of the town is to to figure out that balance. And it's, you know, we're not unique. Many small towns are dealing with this same issue. Had a conference recently with some folks attending from, you know, Sedona and Jackson. And everybody's going through this issue of how do you try to try to take care of everybody? It's not all gloom and doom. Or I don't think I could have stood twenty years. You know, these are the, these are the things that that at least make me happy, make Nicole happy. You know, we have. Have made some strides, and sometimes it's just timing, and sometimes things just take longer than you'd hope. But, you know, some significant sort of accomplishments in my mind. Finally, the an adoption of an employee mitigation code. You know, this this has been on our sort of to do strategy list for twenty years. But it's important to ensure to ensure that new development mitigates some of their impact. And that means by building or de restricting housing for a certain percentage of the new jobs and the new workforce that's associated with a new development. We finally, I think, got that approved in two thousand and twenty. So happy to see that it's sort of in the toolbox. You know, partnerships with the private sector. We we have coordinated with, whether it's CMC or the school district or Summit County. These partnerships are super important to make projects happen in terms of adding additional supply. Land banking has probably been one of our most effective tools. You know, folks that were working at the town long before I got here had the foresight to realize how important was to sort of control our destiny. By acquiring, you know, big chunks of land when they became available. That would, you know, because the McCain property or block eleven. It really has enabled us to be sort of in the driver's seat when and if it's time to develop. Those resources. We have a lot of plans and we'll go through a few of those. We've had many community summits. Obviously, the goal is to find that balance between resident occupied and vacation to create the vision and goals and specific strategies. Touching base regularly in terms of measuring how we're doing. You know, we have regular needs assessments every few years to to see what trends are popping up that maybe we didn't anticipate. And how they're impacting the housing inventory, how the housing inventory is split between resident occupied and vacation. We we utilize a variety of programs like Housing Helps and Buy Downs and build a lot of projects like Valleyburg, Blue Fifty Two and Pinewood. Policies and incentives to add new units and preserve existing neighborhoods. On average, about forty four deed restricted units a year. Eleven, almost twelve hundred units today, and that's different than in my memo. I I had double counted, I think, Gibson Heights in my memo. So this is the true number of our current inventory. Eleven hundred and twenty nine units. And we have about five hundred and seventy four in the pipeline. So, you know, in terms of adding new supply, I think we're 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 doing, we're doing what we can at a reasonable pace. Plans, I I didn't even include the. The plan that Kelly referenced in terms of the destination management plan. But these are plans that serve as the foundation for our housing program. Going back to nineteen ninety seven and then that jump was updated in two thousand and eleven. And this is just a list of the plans for those who maybe weren't here or or don't remember. I think it is important to to understand the foundation of the plan. But the focus of all of these plans really seems to come to really three things. And that's balancing that inventory between the competing interests. Providing as right in housing types comes out in all of our plans in terms of, you know, we have a very, very diverse workforce. So the the housing types and the price points need to be diverse to serve that that workforce. And and then to protect what is special about Breckenridge. These plans are all available on the town website, and I think they give some historical perspective. You know, in addition to serving sort of as the foundation for our program. Visions, goals, targets. There's some very specific targets. And, you know, I think the goal obviously is to ensure we have sufficient labor to support the local economy while also, you know, ensuring that Breck is a real town. Where people can live, work, play, raise a family, sort of over the course of their sort of lifetime. And have your needs for housing change from when you're first here as a frontline employee. And then if you decide to stay and then maybe decide to raise a family here and and then decide that your house is too big and need to downsize. So different needs throughout different stages of the folks that live in town. And but you can see clearly, trying to find that balance, some places it says thirty five percent resident housing, other places twenty five percent. But there's targets around that, there's targets about the. But there's targets around that. There's targets about the percent of our workforce that actually live in the basin where they were. There's some interesting ones about ADUs. We haven't done much around ADUs, but there are some goals established in some of these plans about, you know, 50% of the larger units having ADUs. So those are the targets that, that exist in those plans. And then just the long, long, long list of.
I'm sorry, Laurie, what's that? Can you go back? Was one I didn't, ownership rates minimum, what's WP?
That came out in the 2008 work plan. I tried to plan that that particular goal was founded.
Those of us with head injuries, it's best not to use acronyms.
Oh yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll remember that next time.
All right, Laurie, if I could just jump on, well, Jeffrey already interrupted. The 35% resident housing and that 25 to 35% of housing stock. Is that, since I think some of these plans were before, most of us were on council. Where did that, was that what's just, is that a best practice for communities, for resort communities? Is that, could you, do you have any more information on that?
Yeah, you know, that, you know, the 25 to 35%, I think it was a number that just felt right. I mean, I think every single community is going to have a different number that works for them. I mean, there's going to be some resort communities that want to be 50 50. There's going to be some that are okay with more of their employees commuting in, depending on, you know, how isolated they are, you know, with us being fairly isolated. You know, the feeling was, it was, it just felt right to be 25 to 35%. So I think every community is going to land someplace different depending on, you know, are there alternatives for employees to commute in? For example, Aspen, you know, lots of their employees can commute in and the commutes are not as challenging as maybe our commutes are when you're having to come over Hoosier Pass. And, and there's good transit down in the roaring fort. So every community is going to look at, you know, what's the ability to serve our workforce for, from people that do not live here? And then figure out what you want to try to accommodate in town. I think, you know, when we did the vision plan in 2006, I believe, that plan just involved, it was really a plan driven by the community and all sorts of stakeholder groups. And that 35% sort of came out of those, the outreach to the community in terms of what the community felt was about the right balance. So I think every community is going to be different.
But that was before, because this is, this is a big question in my head about how much workforce do we need? Like there's a balance right between workforce and visitors. And how much workforce do we need? Like how, and that includes, you know, restaurants, retail, that sort of thing, lodging. How much workforce do we need to support the visitor? And also, so if, if this is a number, I don't know, like, I guess that's, there's a difference of like, this is just the number that feels right. Or this is a number that really creates a thriving community between that, that, that employee versus visitor. Also, these plans, were these plans done before the rise of short-term rental? Like when they say vacation homes, is that primarily second homeowners? Where they're only using their home a week or two out of the year? Or was this, I, I mean, you said 2006 once, so I'm guessing that, that was before the, like the rise of the real, like VRBO and Airbnb and that sort of thing. I know, and I can hear Eric saying this right now. I know that we've always been a short-term rental community, but at the same time, there has been a rise in that, right? So what is the timing with those plans?
Yeah, I think the nature of sort of vacation homes has definitely changed with the advent of short-term rental, where they're, they're, like the lights are on and they're used. And so, you know, short-term rentals were definitely not as prevalent when we did the vision plan or the comp plan. In 2008, we did the, the work plan. So not like what we're seeing today in terms of, you know, the percent of vacation homes that are the sort of really seasonal, not used very often versus the number that are, are used a lot. And so these numbers probably were assuming the sort of more low-key vacation homes. But interesting question.
Erin, you know, what, I think something I've said before also that really bears repeating. There was a time when the, the people that understood the lodging community would say to us, look, your, your, your housing stock is aging. You're never going to get anybody to stay in Breckenridge. You're going to need to build new stock. People will not stay in these places. And I think all of us truly believed prior to the advent of Airbnb and VRBO, that that was the truth. That nobody would come and stay in a Valdez Air unit where there was a bunch of locals living. And that, you know, it sounds funny to say today, but they would, I mean, there was a huge discussion about this, that what, what are we going to do as a community to attract guests? That, that's a blind side right there that nobody expected, that people will stay anywhere given these new platforms like Airbnb and VRBO. So that, you know, that sort of gets to the heart of this also. And where our real challenge is, our challenge isn't necessarily the homes in the Highlands that people have rented forever, but these single bedroom places or a couch. I mean, it's so different now. So Dick, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I, yeah, just to pile on a little, I, I mean, this is the crux of our community discussion right now is what is that number? What is that formula? There's, there's, there's no, there's no answer other than it's a value question, you know? And what, you know, do we want to just be a resort where everybody lives elsewhere? Or do we want to be a community and a town that's, that's thriving with local people raising families here? And, and I think our community through just most recently, the destination management plan has spoken very loudly saying, we want to be a town. We want to be a community. And, and it's so critical that we, we work really hard on solutions around that. You know, is the number 47% living in, in the upper blue or is it 25%? I, you know, I, I think we're, for me, I'm striving for 47. That's what we've said over and over and over, over all of these vision plans and studies. Is it realistic? I, I don't know if we'll get there or not, but we've, we've got to work with the entire community in a collaborative way to, to try to maintain and get there as best we can. But, you know, I don't think there's, there's any study anywhere, any other community is going to say, here's the right number. You know, this brings vitality to your community. I think we have to listen to, to the majority of our community. And, and that was why we did the destination management plan just recently, the last three years. And, and, and out of that came a very, very loud voice saying, you know, this is really important.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I know there is no, you know, we're, we're having trouble getting to a, a magic number. But, but we know what numbers were in the past and we knew what it felt like then when we started these discussions, when we weren't in the problems we were today. I don't see any problem with using those numbers of percentage as the, as the accurate number for how many people you want to house in your community.
Well, and just to be, just to be clear though, that, that 35%, that 25 to 35% number, that's not of our workforce. That's of our housing. Right? Like we're on the same page with that, right? That 45% resident housing versus 65% vacation home. That's not saying 35% of our workforce. That's saying of all the houses, that's how much is resident. So that we could, it's possible we could achieve that, those numbers, Dick, that, you know, 47, 56, whatever it is, with the 35% resident housing, it could be one of the same.
Yeah, you're talking two different things. With, you know, what percentage of your housing stock is utilized for residence versus vacation? And as I mentioned before, there's a lot more different, a lot more competition in the resident side from retirees that are in those resident occupied units, remote workers who are in those resident occupied units. So they're not all serving as our local workforce to support our economy. But yeah, we, you know, 35 to 65% of the homes, the housing stock. And then the 47% number has to do with jobs. You know, what percentage of your jobs are filled by people that live in your community? So it's two different measures. One is housing makeup and, and one is where the jobs are and who's working those jobs, what percent of your jobs.
And, and just to skew it more, the, the retirees, the people that remote work, they still add vibrancy to your community though. You know, so they solve what I consider to be the bigger problem in that they, they do, you know, they're the ones that help out with the NRO and the, you know, Summit Foundation and their downtown and they, you know, you see them at coffee in the morning. We want those people in our community. Now, do they change that, the math with, you know, what we need to house employees? Yes, but they do get to the vibrancy of the community issue. And that's, I think that's an important distinction to make, that it is critical to keep people, no matter what they're doing for work or not work, keep them living here year round. Because that's what, I mean, that, that's where that soul of the community question comes from.
So how do we do it?
I'll make one more. I'm sorry, Laurie, just to pile on to what Dick and Eric just said, what we all have been saying. It's, it's, the, the, the numbers, you know, they're, they're certainly compelling in the, the percentages and whatnot. But there will come a time, and, and I, and actually it has come a time, when we just cannot get employees to, to work in our, in our businesses. And now you're looking at, you know, you, you'll say, do we want to, do we want 47% of our employees to live in town or 35%? Yeah, we want that, but the truth is, even if they live, we, we might not even be able to have the luxury of having our employees live out of town with Alma, Park County, Lake County, heck, even Kremlin. Everything's selling out in Kremlin. There's no rental property, you know, you can't even rent a place in Kremlin now. So our employees are going to go further and farther afield to get to the point where they say, hell, hell, this is not worth the effort. I'm going to relocate. And then we've had really popular, long, long time restaurants before the pandemic that had to close for lunch because they couldn't get workers. So this is not a matter of, it's not a luxury of what we'd like. It's a luxury of what we need to service our visitors.
And Laurie, do you have the numbers just to compare those targets with the current situation? I think the last housing needs assessment, that was right before the pandemic. We had local to vacation housing was it, it's currently or pre-pandemic. So we know it's probably shifted a little bit, but it was 70% vacation, 30% housing. So I know roughly that number. Of course, we know that the pandemic probably increased the imbalance. Do we know what percentage of workforce is housed locally? Did the housing needs assessment? Yeah, actually that is in our recent needs assessment. I can pull it out. I don't have it off.
I thought you had that on an earlier slide, Laurie.
I had the, you know, we know that we are now, okay, yeah, yeah. 27% of the upper blue jobs are filled by upper blue residents. So not close.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful just to compare current situation with these targets to know where we're at. And so that 27% is what we would be trying to get up to this 47%? Okay.
If we were going to house 47% of the, if we were going to ensure that, you know, 47% of the jobs were filled by people that work in the upper blue, right now we're at 27%.
So Laurie, somebody's asking, how do we define workforce, right? We do it as those people that work. We typically say at 30 hours a week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, in some capacity that has some impact within Summit County.
Yeah, you know, our, our early deed restrictions, the deed restriction, you know, for example, for Wellington and the obligation for work and those deed restrictions was just you had to work in the county 30 hours a week. It didn't require that your job be located in the county or that there be any relationship between the work you do and benefiting the local labor force. But our new deed restriction is, is worded that you need to work 30 hours a week in the county for business located in and serving the county. So for deed restricted units, the most current template, it requires the business be located in and serving. So no remote workers would qualify, true remote workers. If you're, you know, you could live anywhere you chose, but you choose Breckenridge. Those, those, those workers would not qualify under our current version of the deed restriction.
And Laurie, do you have the, the percentage of resident versus vacation homes?
Current?
Yeah, from the, from the latest study. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm sure I do. Let me pull it out when we get through this presentation.
Thank you.
I'm just writing it down, current resident occupied to vacation occupied.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, we do have some goals. We do have some targets. We can always revisit these and discuss them and see if they feel right. Like we said, you know, every community is going to have their, is going to land someplace different. If, you know, they'll super hard to house workforce in town. So, but they've got Eagle and they've got Minter and, you know, so, and they've got transportation. So certain communities will choose to be okay with in commuting. So the tools, it's really, I found it interesting as I was revisiting these plans. You know, almost every strategy that we talk about even today is on this list that sort of started way back 20 years ago. And some we have deployed really effectively. Some we have not spent as much time on. You know, starting with, I think there's lots more opportunity on employee assisted housing. You know, obviously the ski area has done some housing. Some of the larger employees have the capacity and the resources to do stuff around their housing. The smaller businesses might not have as much capacity. And there's probably strategies to assist some of those smaller businesses, whether it's master leases or, or just sort of resources and assistance. It was actually intended that perhaps housing helps or even buy downs could support the smaller businesses if they could afford to acquire a unit, we could help them to acquire a unit. So, but probably a lot more work we could do to assist, assist our sort of local businesses, depending on what their resources are. But it's really important, I think, you know, almost all the businesses now are realizing that they, they need to have a, a, a plan for housing as, as a fundamental component of their business plan. Because if you can't figure labor out, you know, how are you going to be able to stay in business, unfortunately? Town incentives and fee waivers and land, we've been really effective in assisting the private sector in developing housing by contributing fees or land or incentives. And, you know, a lot of the earlier development, whether it's Wellington or Vista Point, that happened because of public-private partnerships. That's what PPP is. The intensity waivers, the absolute policy, I talked about that a little bit earlier, that ensures that new development contributes something toward, to mitigate some of the demand that they're creating for workforce housing. Land baking really effective for us. It put us in the driver's seat. As I mentioned before, we do have down payment assistance programs that are run through the housing authority. Incentivized ADUs and caretaker units has been on sort of the list since 1997. I think, you know, there's, there's, there's great opportunities for ADUs in certain locations. You know, I, I used to live in an ADU for, in Beaver Creek. And, you know, those are really, really large homes. The owners frequently are only coming to those homes twice a year. And the owners choose to include a caretaker unit or an ADU because they want somebody on site to take care of their home. And those homes take a lot of time to pay the bills and keep them running, even when the people aren't there. So places like Beaver Creek, you know, you see a lot of ADUs. And in fact, it really kept, kept the lights on in Beaver Creek because every single one of those large homes had an ADU. And the locals that lived there worked in a variety of jobs. And that was the, actually the, the community, the, the sub-community that lived in Beaver Creek Village and created a sense of community. Other places where ADUs have worked well, I know down in Denver, there's certain neighborhoods where they're great. You see tiny homes in the backyard and it helps the owner be able to afford the mortgage. I mean, the key to ADUs is that, you know, you've got to have, you've got to have parking, which wasn't an issue in Beaver Creek because they had like. which wasn't an issue in Beaver Creek because they had like eight car garages. Um, and, you know, you've got to um plan for them in advance, um, because you need you need parking, you need a little bit of elbow room. So they work in certain circumstances, um, if if you've thought about it in advance and your goal is to include ADUs. Um, dedicated funding, yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna talk about ADUs when we meet with planning, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about ADUs maybe later in the next steps and with planning too.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, dedicated funding, I'm really appreciate the the community's support of this program with, um, you know, voter authorized um funding. Um, and as I mentioned, it helps a lot. It's not nearly enough to um address the the shortage, the deficiencies, but um, it it puts us ahead actually of a lot of other communities that don't have a dedicated funding stream. Um, the concept that new development should be responsible for sharing in the cost of the infrastructure um has been a recommended strategy for a long time. Diversity of housing types, as I mentioned, our our workforce is super, super diverse. Um, so it's important to to have a variety of housing types, whether it's apartments um that are very affordable, all the way up to six, seven hundred thousand dollars, single family homes for for that sort of missing middle. Annexation policy, um, eh, this one was super, super um effective. Um, early um where um we had properties just outside the boundaries of town and we could um annex them in and then they would become development opportunities, um, really, um, but as a requirement of annexing into town and accessing those services, water and sewer. Um, and we required that eighty percent of the units that were annexed in were deed restricted, so it was an eighty-twenty split. And um, you know, that was the 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 where we um were able to see neighborhoods like Wellington Neighborhood or Vista Point or Gibson Heights, um, many of our neighborhoods are a result of the annu- early annexation policies. Um, um, buy downs was listed in some of our earlier um.
Laurie?
Yeah.
Dennis had a question.
Okay.
Just going back in time with with that said, was Grandview part of that early on? Was that the eighty-twenty split?
Grandview up off Ski Hill?
Right next to Gold Camp, yep.
Yeah, I don't know if that was an annexation policy. I know we acquired units in there, we bought units. Um, but I I Grandview may been a result of, you know, way, way back, um, the town actually had an absolute housing policy which required deed restricted units for new development. We got rid of it, unfortunately, I think, late eighties or early nineties. Um, we went to a relative policy, but Grandview might have been a result of um some um early development code requirements. Um, and actually today in Grandview, we really only have um one deed restricted unit um up there now. Um, most of those units are market, although the owner um has kept them affordable.
Hey Laurie, I got a quick question. You know, we're not operating in a vacuum here. Um, are we factoring in in our needs assessment and and just, you know, actually our mechanics? How the other communities uh doing as far as building workforce housing? Um, because, you know, I'm sure a lot of our beds are used by folks that, you know, maybe one husband works in town, the 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 wife does not. And so are we keeping an eye on some of the other uh other um communities and help maybe encouraging them to uh to put a foot forward? And this might be a question for Eric. I don't know if this is still the case, but when Eric and I served on the joint Upper Blue Master Plan, I believe Blue River actually discouraged workforce housing within their boundaries. Has that changed? And maybe we should reach out uh to the Town Council of Blue River to see if that's still the case and encourage them to acquiesce in that regard.
Their point was not um discourage workforce housing, their point was they didn't want us to encourage it via our code. So at the time, we had a code provision that if you were gonna that we were trying to get people to build affordable housing in Blue River and they took offense at that, that's what we got rid of from the first joint Upper Blue to the second. So a little bit different.
Is is that still in place?
Yeah, we never changed that after after we took it out of our code that that you could do, you could do that up there.
Okay.
I would say that the Blue River's been very um cooperative in terms of our housing helps. Um, you know, the code um that, you know, prevents people from um putting their required obligated obligation for housing in Blue River um is still in place, but in terms of the town of Blue River accepting deed restrictions, um, we've we've had a cup, we've had probably five or six applications for homes in Blue River. Um, and the town of Blue River trustees have always approved those and said, yes, that's fine. If that owner wants to accept the deed restriction, we're okay with it. So um, they've been very cooperative in terms of the housing helps program. It's interesting that the whole concept of deed restriction acquisitions was mentioned way back in, um, you know, at least in the two thousand Affordable Housing Strategy, so um we finally got around to implementing that um housing helps, which was based on the veil indeed. But um, yeah, I think it points that there's there's not one one silver bullet. Um, it does take a variety of strategies, um, you know, partnering with the private sector, um, super important, developing community partners. Uh, the role of the Housing Authority assists with managing the growing inventory and tracking our data, certainly we could improve, but um standardizing deed restriction, um, right now, we probably have twenty different versions of deed restrictions out there, which makes management and compliance um difficult. Um, there's a mention of retirement housing, um, and to sort of try to um pursue um retirement housing, utilizing the private sector primarily, evaluate all town on land and basically all land. Um, and then create policies to deal with um retirement as we saw the the trends um with baby boomers and retirement as something looming on the horizon. So these are um strategies and tools that have been deployed, like I said, to various degrees of um efficiency or effectiveness, but um, just a quick summary of our current inventory, um, we have a hundred and thirty-one units that are kind of dispersed throughout town. Those are those units in um Valdezare or um Gold Camp. Um, they're primarily a result of the Development Code. I mentioned that we used to have an absolute Development Code. Um, and then when we went to a relative um code at least twenty years ago, um, we weren't seeing as many units, um, because it was a relative code. Um, and then we re-implemented the absolute policy last year, but there's about a hundred and thirty-one units that are dispersed in town, deed restriction light. Um, you know, we've acquired uh forty-five units or deed restrictions through buy downs and housing helps. Um, obviously Wellington Neighborhood, that was um the annexation policy as well as fee waivers. Um, Kings Ridge, that's at Beaver Run, um, one of the first employer provided housing projects. Um, Gibson Heights and Vista Point um annexation agreement. Um, out of town water has been another tool that's been pretty effective in terms of um uh being able to um have deed restricted units. It's um Kennington, um Farmer's Grove, Monarch Town Homes, those are all um developments that are outside of town but needed out of town water um in order to develop. So we were able to put a requirement for deed restricted housing in return for the out of town water service. Um, financing options, um particularly for rental um apartments, Pine Wood One and Pine Wood Two. Uh, a lot of units, hundred and nineteen units, um, primarily, we were able to do those projects first because we own the land, so the land banking was super important. But utilizing light tech, um, low income housing tax credits to generate um uh private equity into the projects. Um, using using partnerships, um, uh, was uh the way that those units were able to actually pencil out. Um, then, you know, the land banking, the town owning the project of and being it sort of in the driver's seat. Um, you know, that's Valley Brook Neighborhood, Dennison Commons, Blue Fifty-two, Coto. Those are all sort of um land bank, we own the land and we actually did the projects ourselves as a town, being a developer. Here in Landing, Town County Partnership, um, those are twenty-six apartments on um uh over across from Seven Eleven, uh Vicks Landing, Maggie Classer, those are annexation policies again, that eighty-twenty split, those, you know, the properties were just outside the town, didn't have it development potential unless we um agreed to annex. And, you know, as you know, annexations are completely at the discretion of the council. Um, and so um we end up doing annexation agreements and making sure we um get a big uh majority of those units as deed restricted. Um, well, some more employee provided housing, Moose Landing, that was a sort of a code concession, the property, there was a little issue with um, the height of the building and we provided a little sliver of land, if you recall, um, to make that poss- that project viable. Um, Breck Terrace, um, so another example of employer provided housing, um, only um a hundred and nineteen of those are actually formally deed restricted right now, but they basically serve as workforce housing. Um, but, um, you know, it's sort of a breakdown of the um inventory that we have. Um, and it's 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 dispersed, it's some for sale, um, some rental, um, and just a variety of tools that made the projects um viable.
Hey Laurie, have we approached uh, have we approached Skiria lately about Breck Terrace, about deed restricting everything that they have there?
Um, you know, you it used to be what was happening is they they were deed restricting as they needed it to meet their code obligation. Um, you know, they still have some that are not deed restricted. Um, I don't know, um, we can certainly reach out. Um, I'm not sure what their willingness is um to put a deed restriction on them, but certainly it's something that's at play and um, we should remember in all of our conversations with the ski area that it'd be nice to see those deed restricted. Um, we also, um, at Breck Terrace, um, eh, formerly sort of um eh provided um eh, the Housing Authority with the ability to be part of that ownership entity. I don't know if you remember, it was several years ago, but um one of their partners was exiting the ownership entity and we provided, we could not be a member of the ownership entity, but we provided some funds. So the Housing Authority has a small, small ownership interest in that entity. They don't have mu- much power. Um, but they, um, in return for that, um, we are, um, we received the the first right to use twenty-two beds out of Breck Terrace. So that's been helpful for our transition housing too. Um, the deed restricted inventory, um, we just kind of went through it, but you can see what we have, about forty-nine percent of it is owner occupancy sort of neighborhoods. Fifty-one percent of it is rentals, combination of um, you know, single families, duplexes, condos, dorms, townhomes, apartments. Um, about almost every housing type you can think of, um, it it serves a real variety of AMIs, um, which is really important. Um, but al- always important as we're thinking about new development, new supply that, you know, our goal is to, you know, build neighborhoods, build community, i- it's more than just, you know, heads and beds. Um, it's always been important as we think about and consider projects. Um, and the and and another thing to think about is as we think about the composition and the utilization of our deed restricted inventory is, you know, for those of us that kind of have a roof over our head, um, and sometimes it's easy to to remember how stressful housing insecurity can be. And so in addition to thinking about housing as just like a labor supply and a community character issue, it's really important to think about how we have an obligation to support our workforce and, you know, try to lift some of that burden, um, mitigate some of the challenges that our workforce has. Um, and, you know, that affects, you know, employee satisfaction and performance. Um, but it also is about sort of trying to, you know, impact their lives and all the the outcomes, the health outcomes, the overcrowding, the stress and when families have to sort of choose between, you know, housing, food, car, doctors. Um, so our 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 workforce deserves more than that, um, and and I mean, they obviously, um, you know, bear so much of the burden in terms of um us trying to maintain our local economy. Um, I remember and I've told, I've told this story a couple of times, I think probably Eric's tired of it, but I used to walk to work and I'd stop and get a cup of coffee at a convenience store and there was always this super, super, super friendly clerk in there. Um, and sometimes she would actually even have her like seven or eight year old with her, but um she was always in there working and super friendly, always greeted me. Um, and um I was in there one morning getting my coffee on my walk to work and um uh, somebody had pulled in to get gas and they stuck their head in the door and asked her where they could go to get breakfast in town. And um she basically said, I don't know, you know, I I mainly eat here at the convenience store um because I live an hour and a half away. And I was like, wow, you know, that's kind of the the challenge that a lot of our workforce endure. Um, and it kind of struck me because, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to entertain our visitors. Um, and the people that have most of that sort of contact with our visitors, um, the challenges that they are enduring on a daily basis is just something to to remember. Um, that's one of the reasons we're in this. Um, and so, um, you know, it is more than just providing labor, it's providing quality um existence to our labor. And let them have great lives too. Um, I I know Aspen, at the very beginning of the program, we always look at Aspen because they're so far, uh, they're kind of like twenty-five years ahead of us. You know, what what happened in Aspen twenty-five years ago is what's happening here now. So we look to them as sort of a peer community that can help guide us and um, initially with their program, they really, really focused on low MI, they focused on apartments and and really rentals. Um, and they did lose their middle class. Um, and they have struggled to this day to get back their middle class. So, you know, whatever we do in regard to housing, I think it's super important to remember the the whole um the whole hierarchy and the the whole, as people's lives change, so do their housing needs and we should be diverse in terms of our approach. So what's worked, obviously a variety of housing types, um, mixed income neighborhoods, community diversity, quality construction, um, sustainability principles, um, you know, having our workforce live in town is actually also, um, you know, reduces vehicle miles traveled. There's lots of reasons around having our workforce um housing in addition to just building community. It's the environmentally um sound thing to do. Um, it's important with our um new supply, easy maintenance, low costs, um, obviously strong HOAs and property management. Um, and parking and storage and, you know, as everybody knows, dogs, dogs come with people up here and, you know, we implemented DNA at some of our apartments and that helps a lot. Leveraging the fund, um, we've looked to um low income housing chat, um, tax credits, we've used CDBG grants, um, certificates of participation. You know, for sale is an interesting way to le- leverage our funds, you know, when we build, say, Blue Fifty-two, we might spend sixteen million dollars, but we get close to sixteen million dollars back that we can then reinvest again. So, you know, the for sale um is, it does work for you in terms of not depleting your your fund. Um, the deed restrictions in perpetuity, we talked a little bit about this, is what's the balance between trying to preserve units in perpetuity and and have our supply be protected in perpetuity because it's just gonna get more expensive, more costly, more challenging um as the market continues to evolve over time. Partnerships have been absolutely key and and um Jeffrey, you mentioned the regional approach. I mean, the, you know, the real estate market and the employment market are e- extend beyond the boundaries of the town and beyond the boundaries of the upper blue. Um, whatever we do does need to be sort of a regional approach. Um, pipeline, um, got some things in the works, um, you know, I think there's about oh three hundred and thirty units here in the sort of the short term pipeline. This is new supply, um, two hundred and forty units, um, sort of the mid line, mid pipeline, um, out there a little bit. And then fifteen other sort of longer term um sites that we continue to look at and to analyze, but um the most immediate uh um new supply that we see um listed here and we continue to just keep looking for other opportunities to increase the supply as opportunities become available. So um next steps, we're getting close, um, you know, got to, we've got to continue to um try to increase the supply. Um, permanent housing, um, that's new construction and pipeline, preservation of existing units, um incentives or restrictions around ADUs or short term rentals. Um, uh, employee assisted housing through incentives or master leases. Um, and in those regional opportunities, um, how can we take advantage and what's the right balance of um local versus sort of regional housing? Um, additional supply temporary, this is, you know, it does feel like we're in a situation that's really urgent. So I know, you know, Aspen and Telluride looked at camping. Um, are there some long-term rental incentives that we might want to think about as a temporary sort of measure? Um, got to continue to leverage the fund just because there it's not, there are not. Got to continue to leverage the fund just because there, it's not, there are not enough funds. As I mentioned, I think it was about $500 million that we were going to try to meet the current need. You know, as we enter into the development phase of town, you know, our, our, our inventory is aging and both the market inventory and the deed restricted inventory and, you know, we got to understand if there might be some unique opportunities during that sort of phase of the town's evolution. God, obviously we has, the units have increased, the inventory and the complexity, anything we can do to facilitate and simplify our tracking and identify data sources. Constantly review those goals and those targets and see if they're still valid and are there any tools or strategies that are missing? So I think that's a start of next steps. I do think it's important to, to remember that, you know, the community has and it will continue to evolve and things will change. And, and, you know, we can manage that change to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. What Breck looks like and feels like 100 years from now, it's going to depend to a large degree on what we as a community do to address our biggest challenges. And we can, you know, look to peer communities for best practices and, but ultimately solution needs to be local. It needs to be based on our own sort of unique circumstances and our own unique opportunities. I think keys to success, you know, vision, forward thinking, expect the unexpected, that we didn't expect the pandemic. We didn't really expect remote workers or technology, the things that would change around what the nature of a job is. You know, non bureaucratic, you know, what, this is one thing that I've really appreciated while I've been here is that, you know, the council has enabled staff to be nimble, to be flexible as much as possible, recognizing we have an obligation to really manage public funds, but do it in a way that's nimble, it's not typically associated with government. So the dynamic issue, it's not static, it's change is every day. Perseverance and resilience, I, I remember with Valley Brook when we were starting construction, literally like the day before we're going to break ground, I had so many messages on my machine about how the town was making the biggest mistake ever. And we'd be sitting on a bunch of inventory that, you know, we built and wouldn't be able to sell and what a terrible thing it was to do. So sometimes it's just, you know, moving forward with what you, you think is right, you know, address what we can, some things we cannot control or expect. And super important to come together, I remember and Jeffrey, you sort of mentioned this, but I, I meet quite frequently with George Ruther, who is the housing manager for the town of Vale. And he's like, you know, Vale has even fewer opportunities than we have to address housing. And it used to be a very, very controversial issue, workforce housing in Vale. And that was until they had a, a crisis. And the try, the crisis triggered a community response and the crisis was that Sweet Basil's was not going to be open for lunch. And that somehow coalesced everybody because of Sweet Basil's wasn't going to be open for lunch. I mean, I understand it because Sweet Basil's is awesome, but for some reason, you know, it, it was the front page of the Vale Daily. So that, that got everybody together realizing that, hey, this is a serious issue that needs us to work together. You know, and everybody can do different things. I mean, the town, we can regulate, you know, we can allocate public resources. We can do incentives and policies and hopefully provide some leadership. You know, private sector can hopefully bring capital and creativity and small businesses and big misses as different roles and different opportunities. But all have a part to play, investors, affordable housing developers, and then all of our public institutions and nonprofits. And it won't, it won't really happen unless we all come together and we all do our part. With that, I conclude and open it up for you guys to questions and conversation.
Thanks Lori, that was awesome. You've done an amazing job over all these years of building this inventory up. So kudos to you and to past councils for getting us at least to where we are right now. And if you'll think back, you know, Vale's not the only one that, that had hesitancy in the community about building housing. And we used to get letters, you know, when Jeffrey and I were in our first council terms about, nobody bought me a house, why would you buy, why are you doing this for other people? And, you know, it, I'm glad that we have involved as a community to the point where people understand the need for this as a, as a something for the whole community, not just as a welfare program, that it is important. It's like childcare, you know, those things have become so normal in the way we, we talk that they're widely accepted by virtually the entire community. And a lot of that is the hard work you've done. So, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Does anybody have questions on anything that Lori presented? Otherwise I want to have her close out her, her share screen so we can get everybody's picture back up there.
Just one thing, just refresh me, what's the AMI right now? Is it 60, 60K for individual?
No, it's higher than that. 100% AMI, well, 100% AMI for like one person is 67,000. You know, we look at four person a lot because that's some, that's the target for like sort of the average for sale product, the neighborhood that we do and four person household is almost $100,000. I can stop sharing.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks Lori. All right, questions? Answers then.
Um, I have a question, Lori, I remember when we first met, just going back to how we can look at peer communities, how Aspen's dealt with this a long time ago, they're a little bit ahead of us with dealing with some of these impacts. And I remember you talking about just how large the Aspen Housing Authority staff is. And I know the town of Breck staff, you Nicole, you're leaning me and you've gotten an incredible amount done. And I feel like it puts the town of Breck in a great position where we are, just the infrastructure we have, the land, the previous annexation agreements. But just from a bandwidth perspective, how are you and your team doing?
We're buried. You know, I think Aspen is, is a good resort to look at. I mean, they have a huge staff. I think, I think the last time I looked, their staff was over 30. But they do a lot and they, but they've moved in some directions that likely we will need to move in. They manage sort of the rental apartments that are owned by Aspen. And, you know, we, we never used to own apartments, but right now the town has ownership interest and I think it's close to 200 apartments. So, you know, we, we're doing that, not to the extent that Aspen is doing it. But they also, which is really interesting, and perhaps someday we move that direction, is they manage the, the sale of any and all of the deed restricted inventory. It, it goes through that housing authority. The Housing Authority, you know, basically calculates the maximum resale price, has a long list of pre-approved buyers. They move through that buyer's list into whoever is next on that list in terms of when they, when a unit becomes available. So they do, they do a little bit more in, in regard to the sale of the inventory and as the trend is, it sells and transitions. So, but yeah, it's a very, very complex program, but yeah, that over 30 staff.
Yeah, just piggybacking on that Lori, we talked about this a little at our housing committee meeting. How do we get there? I, I know often when, when we're building staff, we have to be very strategic about it because obviously you and Nicole and, and Corey are, are, you know, incredibly buried with, with so much work. And sometimes, you know, we just say, well, add staff and that's not necessarily the answer because it takes a heck of a lot of time to do that. Have you given much thought in, in how we get there or?
Yeah, we've been talking internally about, you know, the programs and how it makes sense to maybe think about if we could add staff, how, what that would look like in terms of what programs go with sort of what skill sets. Obviously, we, you know, we were doing a lot of new develop, new construction. And that, that's different than, you know, a person that's doing compliance and monitoring. You know, staff that understands our financing options and our grants and what's available to help leverage the fund. So we've definitely started work internally, like in a, in an ideal world, how would we move forward to, to sort of restructure the program and, and create new positions that were sort of, that could take us further and farther. One of the very first things that's on all of our wish list is really to, to work on that automated database system because right now we're still working on spreadsheets and hard files. And so, you know, just to answer the question of, is my unit deed restricted? You know, requires us looking for, you know, where's a copy of that deed restriction and what's that particular deed restriction say? Because like I said, there's like 25 different versions and, you know, what is the resale price formula for that deed restriction versus this one? And what's the employment obligation associated with that deed restriction? Is that deed restricted, is that particular unit now used by an employee that retired two or three units years ago? So how much of our inventory has converted to retired employees that have stayed in their unit? So all that kind of management of the data associated with a large inventory of housing is like number one on all of our lists. And we've worked with the Housing Authority, talked to them quite a bit, how do we try to move along in some sort of shared platform or? But really it's, it's, it's top on our list and to improve the, you know, efficiencies of how we administer and the deed restrictions.
Jeffrey.
Lori, on the brick buyback program, where we're buying units in kind of some of the older condo projects, is, are the HOAs generally psyched about it? Are they cooperating? Do they, were they, are they psyched that we're, we're adding more residents, year round residents to their, to their projects? Or are they bummed that they think it's dropping the property value because it's a year round destination, house rather than a VRBO destination?
It's a mixed bag. I mean, and it depends on the complex. It really is a mixed bag. Some, some people are concerned because, you know, they, they are investors and they short term their units. And anything that they believe could potentially impact their value is a concern. We, you know, and even though we're in a way keeping those units more affordable by putting a deed restriction on them, we haven't found a lot of resistance from HOAs or any organized pushback. I think it's, you know, it, it, it varies by project and there's, there's certain complexes where there already are a lot of locals. And, you know, we can frequently go in and, and get the few remaining market rate units that are left in those. And then the others are pretty good mix, owned by, you know, all sorts of walks of life. And, but not a lot of organized pushback and not even many calls.
Lori, on that HOA question, in one of the roundtables, somebody brought up that there are a number of like different units where the HOA requires that it's a long-term, either, you know, owner occupied or long-term rental, short-term rentals aren't allowed. Do we have a list of those and are we in communication with those HOAs to ensure that those are staying with that?
Yeah, there's a few HOAs that prohibit short-term rental. Those are, those are complexes where we actually do not buy buy downs because the unit is already sort of in our mind protected from converting to vacation. Still could be owned by somebody that comes in and uses it as their second home, but it can't be a short-term rental. So there's, there's really just a handful and I don't have a list. It would be interesting to come up with that list to, I run into them when I'm looking at buy downs and I'm checking to see, you know, what the status is. And in my mind, most of those are maybe up Illinois Gulch area. I haven't run into that in the complexes that are in town, but it's a good idea to sort of get a list and know.
Yeah, I just, I think that because so much is changing, that things that, you know, they used to never imagine they'd be short-term rentals or be short-term rentable. I think it would behoove us to just stay really aware of those that are currently internally regulated to make sure that they're not deciding to move away from that.
The, the problem is Kelly, we can't do anything about that. HOA law sort of exists above our domain. We cannot enforce HOA regulations, we can't take any HOA regulations into account when we do planning stuff. So for instance, if somebody's going to build a house in an HOA and, and the neighborhood doesn't want it, they'll submit a, a letter to the planning commission, it, it doesn't really matter because it's.
I think it's just to stay a part of that conversation. I'm not saying we should enforce the regulation or somehow make them do what they don't want to do. But I think we really just need to stay aware of if there's an entire, you know, complex that's thinking about converting, it'd be great for us to be a part of that.
Oh yeah, we definitely need to know, that's for sure. Yeah. Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, sort of a good segue to the next part and Lori, stay on for this if you can. And that is protecting the feel of local neighborhoods. You know, one of the things that came out of some of our discussions was, was people that live in neighborhoods that are becoming more STR in nature. And some of this came from some residents in the Highlands and I think we have an opportunity to talk, it sort of segues into Lori's discussion about her staffing needs as we start to talk more about, you know, a more robust housing compliance division. Working with the HOAs to create sort of a toolkit for STR issues and stricter enforcement of our guidelines. You know, right now we put that 91 or 911, we put that hotline into effect for things like trash parking and, and noise issues. I don't think we have at any point dropped the hammer on anybody, even though we do have some constant violators. And I think it's time for us to, you know, sort of take the next step there, make sure that number works correctly. Make sure we can help some of these neighborhoods that are seeing this increase to, to maintain that livability in the neighborhoods. And, you know, you're lucky if you are in a neighborhood and you have some STRs that have a lodging company that really takes care of the things that need to be taken care of. But it's a bummer when your neighbor is, doesn't care, is on Airbnb, VRBO, that number gets called continuously. It's like every time a new renter is in that unit, it's almost like we start from scratch again. So that, I think that's the next place we'd like to have just a short discussion.
I know that with the VRBO hotline, I don't know if it's a three-strike-you're-out type deal, but I, I think there should be some definite predetermined consequences for, you know, either how many, how many times your, that number is called, how many times that home is reported with the outcome being forfeit of a license.
Yeah, it's not being talked about. Did we not talk about that when we were putting this into place?
It's kind of a fine process, I believe. And maybe, 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 you know, like, you know, if you're raising livestock, you can lose your license in your condo. But I, I'm pretty sure it's, it's very lenient.
It certainly airs more on the side of the license holder, I believe. You know, it requires us to issue a warning letter to them on a violation and then we need to follow up. And I think we've tended to be more lenient, you know, more customer friendly because, you know, especially if the owner shows, you know, some willingness to work with us on that. But, you know, I, if, what I would suggest is if this is something I think that the council feels is important and we, you know, we can come up with a strategy on this. I mean, I've been thinking a lot about how do we take compliance to the next level and what does that look like, you know? And we should, we should have more of a. And we should, we should have more of a proactive compliance versus a reactive. Currently now we react to complaints, right? And we, and we're doing a good job of following up with people. But if we had multiple compliance positions, you know, we could be out there even doing proactive patrol and looking at where we know there's problems or areas to look to see if we have violate, parking violations going on. You know, and, and working with whether it be, you know, the Highlands neighborhoods where they have, you know, they've identified some, some units in there that they're having issues with and, and they've become pretty proactive as HOA. So how do we work closely with them to see these things as they're happening versus hearing about them 24 hours later?
I think there was some speculation, there were units that were operating without a license. They were, they were kind of banned units, at least that's what the assumption was, not from the town, but from the HOA. I mean, that certainly that's a snake closest to our foot that we should shoot. And, and, and yeah, if we had a staff that could do a, add a compliance component to it, that's something, but we'd have to figure out how to pay for it.
But I, I think that could come from fees. I mean, jumping to a, I'm assuming a future discussion or a, you know, later in this meeting discussion, but around the licensing fees. We could generate a budget around compliance through raising those fees. And I, I think we need to do that. Um, we need to do it strategically because we don't want to overwhelm our current staff. But I think we need to develop a plan and, and start working towards it because we need compliance around, not only the short-term rental license requirements in, in the impacts to neighborhoods, but also around our deed restrictions that we've invested so much in over the years. And we have 1100 of now. And as Laurie outlined, you know, it's a complex compliance, issue because over 20 years, we have a lot of different kinds of deed restrictions and requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So, so I, I'm, I'm, I would like to, to see us discuss or I'm in favor of, you know, raising, and maybe substantially raising the fees for short-term rental licenses so that we can afford. So we, we generate a budget for compliance and for some of the incentives that I'm assuming we'll talk about in a bit.
Hey Dick, I, I think, um, what, what we really want to do is get, let's get a temperature for the council if we want to move in this direction. And then let's let staff, um, figure out exactly what it's going to take. How many employees it'll take? How many employees will we need to add to housing to compliance? And then, you know, and then we can start working on that. How, how do we pay for it piece? How's everybody feel about that? I don't, I don't think, other than just us telling Rick, look, we, this is what we want. We want to move to the next phase of compliance. Uh, we can't get in the weeds too much about how we're gonna pull that off at the moment.
Well, I, I agree with you Eric, but I also think we need to have an urgency. So we might do them in parallel track in my mind. I, I certainly want to respect the staff and not overwhelm them and give them the time to develop the strategy to do this. I, I don't want us to be in the weeds there. But I'm also maybe not comfortable waiting to start, um, discussing the, 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 the plan to generate some funds either. I, I. Urgency, to be honest. We were told there's a huge urgency in our roundtables.
Yeah, yeah. The problem is without knowing exactly what that number is, it's difficult for us to put an adequate fee on, you know, on what we're doing. I think until Rick really tells us what that's gonna be, I think it's hard to have that discussion without just, you know, throwing darts at a dartboard. And, you know, Rick has said thi- this will, I mean, he wants to work on this quickly. This is not a, you know, we're not waiting a year to, to get to this point.
Well, so I think what's going on, and maybe I'm wrong, but, um, I'm sort of making a list of the things that, you know, we probably need to develop programs around. And so that list is maybe something that staff, and I'm sure Shannon's doing the same, but staff can look at and say like, so how much will it cost for us to, you know, hire five new employees for a compliance division? Because I think Dick's point is there are other things, other programs that we're gonna need to, um, well, I think there are programs that we need to figure out how we're gonna fund it. And so I think that's part of the fees discussion, but not specifically how much, you know? That would be in Rick's realm. Cause I was thinking the same thing for, um, not just compliance. I mean, someone said that we do have a compliance hotline that is doing pretty well. But we've heard several times now that it, it's maybe not doing so well. Um, and certainly impacting some of the locals' neighborhoods like Warriors Mark. And so I think, um, I, I love Rick's idea of having someone who's more engaged, not just reacting days later. And then along those same lines, I think is the ADU compliance. You know, I think we need to broaden our, our, um, maybe incentivizing ADUs. But I know that part of the difficulty with that is we've always made it very narrow because we don't have compliance. So that's another area I think we're gonna have to fund, find some funds to have a compliance officer for that.
I agree with all that. If we're trying to, and there's definitely going to be overlap with however this works out, with funding, with staff time. Going back to what we're talking about specifically with short-term rental compliance and exploring consequences. I think it's something we absolutely should explore.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think, you know, these are, it's business, right? They're, they're businesses. And if, if a business, you know, violates rules so many times, there are consequences. But there's also, you know, organizations set up within government to make sure that that happens. So I feel like this is a really fair way to go about it.
And one thing just to mention, I know in multiple of our focus groups that, um, individuals brought up having these types of licenses more similar to liquor licenses, where there is consequence, where there is more just compliance enforcement.
Okay, does that, we good on this piece? Letting this, letting the staff start to generate some protocol? Rick?
Eric, what I'll do is I'll pull together an internal meeting and we'll sit down on a whiteboard and we'll draft up, you know, like, what, what we could accomplish in that over the next, uh, 12 months and what would be realistic and put a number to that. You know, on these other strategies that we know we already have in place, I'm gonna need feedback from those groups. Similar, I mean, like with the, when we look at the, how do we incentivize the STRs to become, uh, long-term rentals? You know, there's so many different strategies that are being tossed around and, and that. And, uh, all of them involve money to some regard. And that's where I think we're gonna have to work with that committee to figure out what that potential budget could look like. Uh, for those, you know, whether we call that, continue to call it housing works or some different form, you know, of, of that. But essentially it is housing works. It could just look a little different, but.
Does that sound good to everybody? Yes.
Shall we, uh, make sure everybody's up to speed? I mean, so the, the strategy of how do we incentivize current long-term, uh, short-term renters to become long-term, put their unit into that. There's a group that has been meeting. I know Kelly's been part of that. Carol, you got involved too. Uh, there's some people in the county, I think, that are, are part of that. And certainly there's been an interest in even some of the other communities to want to look at this as a countywide type thing. And, and Kelly, maybe you want to talk for a minute about kind of where we're going and what's happening with that one? It kind of jump-started, which, um, I think we all agree that we thought, saw that as a very viable strategy. And so it, instead of waiting, we kind of jump-started and, and let this group kind of hit the ground running, um, a little bit.
Well, I'll start, but Carol is definitely up to speed and she can fill in. I just, after we met with FERC and some of the other nonprofits, they had talked quite a bit about the Housing Works Program, which is currently, um, in the community and had been developed. You know, um, Tamara had been a part of the development of that when she was at FERC. And so, um, it has a lot of great, um, sort of, it, the, you know, that framework of it is really great for long-term renters. And it includes some discounted property management. And it had, at the time, FERC was, um, screening the people who were going to be renting. And, um, there's, there was sort of a list of properties that would be, you know, could be easily incentivized into, um, instead of being short-term rentals, being long-term renters. And so we, the committee that we've sort of loosely formed and was really just to find out more about the program and how could we apply it at a greater scale? They have about 50 units in the program right now. And they said that they do, although they lose some, they usually have right around that number. And, um, you know, they haven't had a ton of success in the Breckenridge area, but there have been other neighborhoods that are more traditionally local and a little bit more affordable, um, where they've had success. And, um, I think one of the things that we kind of have been talking about is, you know, those, how, just what the question that came up earlier, which is how close is, how much incentive will need to be provided either by the town of Breck or countywide in order to make that long-term rental sort of competitive with short-term rental? And there are just a lot of ideas being kicked around because many of the clients who are currently long-term owners are, um, you know, they're doing it because of community good. And so they do believe that a portion, we could probably capture some more long-term rentals just by talking to some of the, um, some members of the community who own these properties and just letting them know, you know, we have a real need, you could get discounted management. We'll screen the people who live in the unit, we'll ensure that they're paying their rent. And so there's a lot of great things already going on. And I think that as a group, we're just looking at how we could apply it, maybe make it bigger. But also, you know, with a real eye to, this is sort of a short-term fix. Cause every single year, you have to go back through this whole process with people. Um, they do get some people to do maybe a two-year lease or commit to doing the program for a few years, which is certainly beneficial. But once we've sort of incentivized this program, that money is gone. It's not like a unit that we own forever and, you know, and it's got a deed restriction on it in perpetuity. So just being fiscally responsible, we do have to be somewhat careful. It's gonna be a balance, just like we've always said, that we're gonna have to approach this and getting our workforce into these neighborhoods in a lot of different ways. I think that's what we've been learning more and more through, while we've been learning about this program is that it, this is just gonna be one way that we hopefully can, um, approach our housing situation. Carol, you wanna add? I'm sure.
I think you summarized it really well. Um, the Housing Works Program, although small, it seems like it's had tremendous success in that landlords stay in the program and tenants are staying in the program. And as Kelly hit on, we didn't see, the program hasn't seen a ton of success in the upper blue. Probably, um, going back to what Laurie and Kelly said earlier, Breck is beachfront. So I think there, um, the prices are so much more expensive here and see how it can work locally. So we're still gathering data, talking to partners, seeing how this could work. Another thing that's stuck out with the Housing Work Programs is it is not an affordable housing program. The goal of it is to take short-term and make it into long-term rental. So with existing program, if we wanted to mimic something, we'd have to really think about how do we subsidize, how do we make it affordable? Again, not a long-term solution, but I think there's some opportunity there. And then the biggest question is scalability. Can we really expand this program to make it work? Right now it's largely being run by, um, the Omni Group over in Dillon. And they are just, they want to be good community partners and they are willingly reducing their property management fees for people within this program. So Kelly and I are gonna keep meeting with Laurie, with others, um, and see if this is truly a viable option to explore in Breck.
And we all got, uh, I shared a, a letter with you that came, um, from the, whatever we're calling this Summit Association of Vacation Rental Management Companies yesterday. And there were some strategies in there, some that I don't believe are doable legally and some that could be. And those are just other ways to incentivize it. And I don't think that this is a long-term solution for the most part, but it could be a short-term. Cause we do need to, it's, it's probably the, it's, it's our best chance at what can we do in the next 12 to 18 months or two years? Uh, while we're, some of these units that are in the pipeline, you know, and we can get another 300 units out on the market and have an impact. So if we could, you know, if we can even get 5%, you know, or something like that, we grabbed another 100 units in, in the upper blue, that's, that's helping us address some of the need right now. And I think we are looking at pulling in some, in our roundtables, we identified a couple of people that focus on long-term rentals, um, in the Breckenridge area. And hopefully we're gonna pull them in. I think that was one of the plans that I had heard to, to reach out to them, pull them in on some of our future discussions. So. So is there, everybody agree that that's, that's an important short-term? I mean, it should be a priority for us to continue to examine how we may grab some of these units that are, that are, you know, kind of, uh, on the fringe right now, whether they're making money or not. See if we could kind of push them over to the other side a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's really important.
Right. Yeah. And so what I think, you know, like all of this stuff, we, it needs, we, there's a sense of urgency. You know, that we can't just be, well, we're working together. I think we've got to come up with quick, doable strategies. So we, we need the, we need those units yesterday.
Okay. Any other comments on this, uh, conversion of short-term to long-term? Let's take, uh, let's take a break. Is everybody good? That's, that's two hours. Is everybody good staying on for a while yet today? Aaron, I know you have to leave.
I have to go, but if you, I think it's just, there's a chance this meeting will end. Yeah, it's 10 to 10:30. So there's a chance I could come back if you guys are still talking.
Great.
Probably will be.
Uh, we probably will.
We're only halfway through the agenda.
The other option would be to pick this up on another day also.
Yeah.
Everybody's good pressing through. Let's press.
I hope, I'd like to go another hour if we can keep everybody focused.
Let's do that. Let's take a quick, let's take a quick break and then, uh, do what you have to do and, and then come back.
How long?
What do you want? Five minutes or 10 minutes? What do you need?
Five is fine.
See you in five minutes.
Well, Kelly decides.
I spoke up the quickest. Nobody else could get off mute.
This is a grand jumping kind of day, huh?
Oh, man.
So I'm thinking, I don't know if you've been hearing any of that at all, but I think there's also, we're talking about trying to capture short-term rentals that we can get to go long-term. And to me, there's got to be a way to replenish that fee, to replenish the money that we'd spend to do that. And, you know, we don't have the ability to tax, but I'm thinking it's an impact fee on short-term rentals. And I don't know what that percentage looks like, to be able to get a pull of money.
Dennis?
To incentivize, yes.
You're not on mute.
Thank you.
You still hot?
Yeah, hang on a second. Hi, Rick.
Hello.
Hey, I can't stop my video because the host has stopped it. Who's the host? Stop my video.
All right. Sorry, Jeffrey, there you are.
What are you talking about?
Helen put me on double secret probation and she hid me.
You know what?
I think you mean, thank you, Helen. Thank you very much for taking care of me.
I'm thanking Helen.
That's unfortunate when we'll go in person. There's no mute button.
Yeah, I can't wait to go in person.
Oh, I know, right?
Are we still next week, Rick?
Yep.
Okay.
We're in person next week?
Uh huh. Tuesday, normal council.
Online.
In person.
You will be in person and the doors will be open to the public to come in.
You can wear a mask if you want, Jeffrey, or a bubble or something.
Are we still sitting in the same places and stuff?
No, I'm going to rearrange people based on new.
No, as far as, like, do I still sit next to Aaron, between Aaron and Dick?
Aaron asked that, Aaron gave, slid me $5 to move her.
She wants to move me?
All right, game. I'm excited. I apologize for not muting myself. I.
Rookie mistake.
Rookie mistake, right?
That's why.
Little rookie.
Hey, Eric.
Yeah.
Eric, before we, before we jump back into this other stuff, I think it's worth letting people that are listening in know that the town will, it goes without saying, but I am going to say it, that we are going to continue our kind of robust town-sponsored, you know, that concept of how do we build our, our way out of this? Because we, we do support building and I think it reminded everybody that what Lori said, that we have, you know, we're expecting to bring 300 new units online within the next 24 months. Anybody that has built anything knows that, that you can't really accelerate that process more than we, I think, already are. And we're the town and we can, we can step around some of those processes quicker than probably the average person out there. So, but we are moving feverishly. We're looking for opportunities to engage anytime we can with private developers, the new 200-unit one we're trying to bring online. You know, we did that, we reacted to that within the last month or two. You know, we're, we're leveraging private development dollars to try to build those 200 additional units. So we, that is something that's always on our mind. We're always looking for opportunities, but it's still, you know, it's not a, it's not a quick fix. But that is something that we will be continuing to do. So.
And Rick, just to add to that, from, you know, kind of a housing committee's perspective, I, and I totally agree. You know, we are working hard to keep the pipeline full, as Lori said, and it's a, you know, it takes time. So we're planning, we're, but the reality is we can't completely build our way out. We don't have capacity in the valley. We don't have land. We don't have dollars. So, you know, this, this is just a part of the solution, but we certainly are not ignoring it. We also feel really important that we do it in the right place and that we build quality housing for our workforce to, that we, you know, we show, you know, the workforce is super important and they need to have quality, healthy housing for them. So, you know, ideally near public transportation, you know, where they've got some open space nearby and parks and, you know, where it's just, just quality stuff. So all of these things are in the consideration as we, as we get things through the pipeline to continue building for, for years to come.
There has been discussion about, you know, that we haven't built enough rental stock, but we've really done everything. I mean, if you look at Lori's analysis that she did, we've been building in that 40 to 80% AMI range and it's everything from rentals to for sale and both have merits, both have hangups. And, you know, I think, I think it's been a good mix. This next 80 units is rental, the following 200 will be rental, 150 to 200. So, you know, we've definitely done both. Go ahead, Rick.
And, and we will continue. I mean, the buy-down program is a great opportunity for us to take existing housing. That is a quick fix, you know, but we're limited. We, we try to not compete against locals that are trying to buy these units. So we're, we have a heightened awareness of that. We can't always be aware. When, when we do have an awareness, we'll back away from that because those are the people we want to see, you know, purchase those to live in. And so, but we get about $3 million a year is what we're generating with the point, the sales tax. The impact fee that's generated is, you know, maybe another, is included in there or could be an additional half million from construction impact, I believe. Lori, is that, that's about right on those numbers. And that's, while it seems like that's a good pot of money, at the level that, at the level we are producing housing, it's not nearly enough. So as we look at, as we look at, you know, what, what, what funding do we need to run programs? We also need to be looking at what more could we do with housing helps? What more could we do with buy downs if we have some extra dollars? Because I can tell you that just these 200 units, so we're building 27 units right now. They've gone up 34% in cost. They're, you know, we're going to go out and bond that, but that's a nine and a half million dollar bond just to keep our cash ready. Because when we do the 200 units, we're going to need to leverage 6 million towards that kind of public-private partnership to get 200 units. So that's a good use of 6 million. It's a loan. It will come back, but it, that takes cash when you're leveraging that type of, of a partnership. You can't, you know, go bond that because we're, that's, that's a public-private partnership. And so our tax exempt bonding that we do becomes convoluted in those arrangements. And we're, you know, we've done Lytech, we've got, we've heard from people saying, are you looking at Lytech and all that? And Lytech is good, but it also ties your hands. It also doesn't allow us to say that has to be occupied by a local workforce. When it's a Lytech unit, you can have somebody driving up from deciding to live here from Denver and working remotely in Denver and occupy a Lytech unit. So we lose a little bit of, you know, discretion on how those units are occupied. So there, it's give and take. It's give and take. And we've done both and we will continue. But those are things that, that we will do. And I, part of, as we come back to the council and say, you know, to, to fund, to fund housing at the level we think we need to start funding it, what, what are the additional dollars that we're going to need? And then how do we generate those dollars? Either through taxing or fee-based or a combination of both is, is the recommendations that, that you're going to hear from, from me when I'm talking to you about this. And we're already working with the town attorney to understand how do we structure fees and apply those fees to, to what programs in a manner that makes them more bulletproof. So that's just, that's the other strategy that we'll be working feverishly on. So.
Can I just ask the housing committee to talk about, I know that Lori has mentioned this before and so it's not new information, but one thing that I think is a real concern as far as sort of people never vacating workforce housing is that now that property's on Peak Seven and in Warriors Mark and, I mean, the Wise Horn is way ahead, but you know, those houses where people used to sort of progress from a duplex or a triplex into the Wellington neighborhood and then eventually they'd move out of Wellington neighborhood, that upper middle class is really struggling to get out of the upper, or out of workforce housing. And I know that that's probably not where we're going to build housing, but I'm just wondering if there are any helpful programs in communities that we've seen out there that help people get from workforce housing into the next step? Because there doesn't seem to be really a next step anymore. And so it just really, it, you know, creates stagnant housing pool. And I don't know if there's, there are, you know, helper programs that would ladder people out of the Wellington neighborhood, but I see time and time again, I can't tell you the number of times I've heard in the last year, oh, well, we made an offer for the same amount, but it was a cash fire and so we didn't get it. So just throwing that out there.
That's a great, great, yeah, great idea, Kelly. I, I wonder what we can even do as a town to assist in that kind of thing, especially in those cases where there is comparable offers that, you know, just, just go sideways for some reason. What can we do to, to assist in, in that kind of thing? And of course, you know, part of it with us would be to put a deed restriction on it also would, obviously.
That's where we, that's where we have assisted people, but we're not, I don't know that we're assisting them, you know, from middle-class to upper-middle-class. We're assisting people in purchasing something that I would say is still that middle class, but we through a, through a housing helps program. So, you know, the challenge is how do you assist somebody or should, should we be assisting somebody that wants to go into a market unit from a deed restricted? Which, you know, we saw that happen before, but it's tougher now, right?
Right. There just used to be that natural progression. And I was just thinking a little bit about what Lori said about Aspen and losing like a segment of the community. And I just, I think that will happen. It's, you know, at some point, people will get tired of being in a 1,500 square foot home, even though it's wonderful and been terrific for them for a decade. And they'll feel like they have to move out of the community. And I just think it's all part of the discussion. Maybe it's not someplace we can help, but maybe there's a program out there that has been developed that might be a good idea for us to look at.
There might be opportunities if you did a partnership with a private developer in the town, put some incentive or land in there that you would limit that to a certain AMI even, or, or something, or maybe it's a market unit with no short-term rentals for a neighborhood you're creating. So there, there's some balance in there that it doesn't have income caps or different things like that. But you're, you're taking it to another level so that they, you know, I mean, our short-term rental, our Wellington homes are 600,000 now, right? So what do you do? Do you create a 700,000 to a million dollar range in, in an area, but it still has certain limitations that don't allow for things like short-term rentals?
Or all of them, you know, the, that one development that was brought to us at one point by Begley, he had like million to million-two-dollar homes, but we suggested, and I don't think he brought this forward, but an ADU over each of those garages would allow, that would be the perfect progression home for a lot of people from the Wellington neighborhood. Be a bigger home, you'd get some help with the rental. Anyway, I'm not saying it's a solution for everyone, but the pipeline is just so jammed, you know.
Oh, and that's what the eye-openers for me was when Todd Rankin said, there's nothing in Blue River under a million dollars.
Yeah.
That was the eye-opener that everything's changed really quickly.
No, and Kelly's right. We used to always talk about this was a progression. You know, you start, you start here and you move through, you move to the Wellington, you eventually phase out of the Wellington, move some, move into a market rate union somewhere or unit somewhere in the community. And you're right, that, there's a huge gap now.
You're right, that, there's a huge gap now in those. So maybe that is a place, since we are having trouble. Um, finding developers, more local developers to build workforce housing. Maybe, maybe that's an area. That we could get some developers to make some stock that is more expensive that we can assist. Maybe with density or water or fees, um, you know, uh, plan review and stuff like that. In order to, to create, you know, to open that pipeline up for those people to move out of. The phase right before that to open that up to other people. That's a great idea, Kelly.
Yeah, I would add, um, you know, Aspen does have several categories of housing and they have a super high category of housing. I think it's called category eight. Or it might be category one. I can't remember how they, how they labeled them. Um, and so it'd be interesting to see. What kind of activity they see going on in that particular category and how they've been able to either incent it or um. Increase the opportunities for people to, to sort of move out of the, the, the other units and free them up and just have a, a progression.
Alright, um, that's awesome. Rick, do you want to move on to the uh, license application or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we could spend a little time in, on that too. I think part of what we uh. This kind of goes back into that whole thing of how do we bring some type of equity to short term rentals and other. Business type functions, whether it's um, you know, liquor licensing or other things with, that we, where we license and. Um, you know, we could probably debate with people all day long about whether it's a, you know. They're operating as a commercial enterprise with, when they do this. And that's the whole basis for when they buy the property and how it's. Operated as to what they can expect for uh, ROI's and everything. They're giving a breakdown, you know, so. Um, is it, is it almost too easy or are we doing enough? And, and are we also being flexible enough that we could allow opportunities to, as part, I think it goes a little bit hand in hand with our. Our uh, incentivizing people to be long term renters. Do we have a program that maybe would be considerably. Less expensive if somebody is willing to at least do a seasonal.
Yep.
Right? Maybe they would do a six month seasonal long term rent and then keep it short term. Uh, for themselves and others, you know, the other, the other season, whichever their preference is. And people have different seasonal preferences here. So we don't currently uh, we have that flexibility, but that would be a, probably a fairly easy fix that we could look at. And we, you know, that was brought up in the roundtables and we think it's something that's worth exploring.
Yeah, and then that, you know, it's sort of the second part to that. I, I think that we definitely need to bring some of our partner agencies in. In our licensing, in particular, Upper Blue Sanitation and the Fire Department. And, you know, for instance, if you're gonna, if you're gonna build anything. Um, even to an existing structure, if you're gonna, you know, do something to a retail store or restaurant in the community, you have to go to the town and get a green sheet. And the green sheet's got sign offs for other agencies. You need to, you know, go to the water department, make sure your water fees are paid and go to the fire department, make sure you're. You know, adequately covered. You have to go to the sand district, make sure the taps are paid. We don't have anything like that for this. Short term rental license. And I think that's sort of important. And it's not, you know, this is not to burden the process. It's not to add money to the process. It's just to make sure that everything is, you know, all the, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted that. You do go to the sand district and make sure that that's, that license isn't an adequate license, that the, the fire part is right, that the carbon. Monoxide detectors are right. So, you know, I, I would like to see just a little bit. Additional information that needs to be generated, you know, as you get a license for. I mean, honestly, it's a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. We need to make sure that everything is done correctly. A lot of the units were built under an assumption years ago and some have potentially morphed. So. The, the county records are not always accurate. You know, and we have had people come forward and say, look, I have this bedroom that's been there since before I bought the property, but it's not legal. Well, we'd like to know about that. That, that's gotta be part of this process. Um, you know, for this to be a, a robust process.
Would, would there be any way that we can incorporate? Um, okay, so let's say you're creating a, you know, a two bedroom VRBO or a four bedroom VRBO. There'd be more labor requirements for each individual, you know, the more the bedrooms are higher than the, the maintenance and the, the employee needs. For those units would be, would be any way that we can incorporate a uh, contribution or a. Uh, fee into the housing fund that would help to fray the, the cost of need of housing. The various uh, tradesmen and craftsmen and management people that wouldn't be necessary for our unit.
Yeah, I, you know, Jeffrey, I think we need to be careful when we talk about fees. You know, that's something that Rick sort of alluded to. Tim needs them, Tim needs to tell us what. How a fee is directly associated to what you're, you're putting it on. We need to make sure that the number's correct. We need to make sure that. It's the, it's the correct thing that that fee goes through. So I, I think we need to make sure that, that Tim Berry gives us the proper. Um, guidance on this before we just throw out numbers or reasons or anything like that. You know, we're gonna, we need a compliance division. We need to. Be a little more robust in our housing division. So, you know, we're just not sure at this moment, I don't think what we can ask. What would adequately um, and legally work?
You know, you know, one thing that we talked about earlier, I'm just wanna, I'm just gonna say it one more time. We have all these various departments or needs. Enforcement, the hotline, I uh, uh, help, uh, the buying help, whatever it's called, buy downs, seasonal law, you know, all that stuff. It would be nice if we had it, and maybe we do, but had it under one roof, under one staff. Like I honestly think. I think the buy, I think the uh, house, the hotline program does work, but you know, I know it's kind of an island unto itself. I think, I think the housing department needs more staffing. And to oversee all these various uh, configurations of, of the impacts of, you know, in, and also the uh. The, the quest for um, long term housing.
Tim?
Um, I wanted to speak to Jeffrey's question about using essentially employee generation. As the basis for some sort of a fee. Um, I think that would, could be done. The problem is we don't have current information. The, uh, I think the last. Well, Kelly provided me the, a white paper that was done in, was it twenty sixteen?
Yeah.
Um, that kind of spoke to that issue, but the white paper. Uh, in a number of places says the information in the white paper isn't, can't, is not strong enough to form the basis of a fee. So if, if the fee is going to be based upon employee generation, that's gonna take an updated study. Um, and that takes time in addition to the money.
How long, how much time, Tim?
Yeah, it's probably six months because you gotta go out, contract somebody to do it. But you can also generate fees for programs. That we have in place and do that. And so I think what, what we need to do is. We need to sit down and by we, I mean, uh, Tim and I and staff and we need to say, what is our best. Strategy to create a fee that will serve our needs based on what we. You know, estimate those needs to be and that fits within the laws, you know, of the state. And then, you know, I, I'm still gonna, you know, I think an option is still out there for a tax in addition. An additional lodging tax on, on what I consider non exempt short terminal properties. Uh, which gives you a little more latitude into how those dollars are spent as long as it's spelled out in the ballot. Um, so, but.
And I, I think we need to be clear when we use the term fee, that fee can mean a couple of different things. Uh, under Colorado law, an application fee, just like a building permit fee, is really intended. To reimburse the town for the cost of processing the application. That's different from the kind of fee like our, our plastic bag fee that funds a specific program. Uh, it, and I, so I think the application fee for an accommodation unit, if we, it can be raised. If we can justify that uh, the expense of, of reviewing and processing that application has gone up. Um, we could do that, that usually takes a study to determine that. But as far as a program related fee. Uh, for example, you, I, I think you could create some sort of an affordable housing program fee. Uh, workforce housing, however you want to characterize it. Um, and there, the rules are, would be identical. To what we have with our bag fee. The funds have to be for a specific purpose. They have to be segregated. They have to be accounted properly. Um, but I do think that kind of a program fee is possible. As well as the application fee for a short term license, but the standard, legal standards are different between the two different kind of fees.
So.
I've heard the term impact fee a few times. How does that fit in?
Well, a, a true impact fee under Colorado law is authorized. It's intended. For capital expenditures uh, associated with the program, but by the Colorado statute, an impact fee has to be tied. To a development permit, which would be at the time of the construction of a project. Which is different than what I think we're talking about with some sort of a um, STR accommodation unit fee. You, so I, I don't think a statutory impact fee is, is workable. I think you could characterize what I've labeled as a program fee a, as essentially an impact fee. But it would not be an impact fee under the Colorado statute. I think this is where the, the town's Home Rule Authority uh, would help. Um, and so we could label this, I'm gonna call it a program fee as intending to help mitigate the impacts. Of uh, the housing problem that you've all been talking about this morning.
Thanks, Tim.
So would next steps be to have um, Rick and, and whatever staff he's chooses to meet with Tim and then bring it back to us for a work session? Discussion?
That's, that's fine with me. I think that's a logical approach, Dick.
Okay.
I mean, what we're getting today is we're getting some direction from you on where we think um. Where we think we're headed, which gives me the ability to start kind of putting together some cost estimates relative to that. Um, you know, the, I think the, the biggest unknown for us is gonna be the, the incentive. Ins, the incentive program is developed for uh, trying to convert to long term rentals and, and what that could be. But as soon as that committee can just even some ballpark, you know, if we thought the average conversion was gonna be. Um, five thousand dollars per unit, let's say, you know, to tip that scale. Then, you know, and, and we target X number of units, then we could get an idea if it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. You know, what's it gonna cost us to go in there and try to do some conversion? Um, on that, and that, so that's, that's kind of the, that, that's how I think we want to proceed. And then it's us really setting down. Um, and, and Tim's, as I said earlier, Tim's already started a little bit of the work through the attorneys less served and, and doing. I had a conversation with the city manager in Steamboat Springs. Yesterday because Steamboat was part of the attorney conversation going on as they're looking at how do they go out and generate some. Workforce housing dollars and they're looking, but when I thought they were looking at a fee, but now they're gonna go, uh, they're gonna go for a tax. On their SGRs and probably this November is what they're looking at. That, that they think the sentiment is right in the community right now for, for that to pass as a local issue on there. So. That's.
Do you think, do you think we could move that quickly?
If we did a tax?
I, if that was, if that was what the decision was, yeah.
Yeah, but I wouldn't do it in November. I've always said that this is a local issue that I think should be on a local ballot, which would, you know, would to me would be. April of twenty two uh, is, is when. And, and we, we know there's, we've talked about this, right? We've talked about attacks for. To help fund not only some housing questions, but some as a sustainable funding source for our childcare scholarships, which is. In a way, it's all related because it helps us uh, retain that workforce that we need. To be part of this community. And so, I mean, that's where a tax gives you a little flexibility depending on how you define the ballot. Uh, or define it in the ballot. So, um, I, I think that'll be part of the discussion when we come back in a work session, when we look at funding. What we will call funding options for this. So. Yep. Uh, Eric, the one on the, we, we know that we saw a theme. A, a, a theme start to emerge on what can the town do to be more flexible and making it easier for somebody to go out? And, you know, make, create a housing option. And, and that's kind of categorized as, as I'll call our planning code. Whether it's how do we deal with ADUs? How do we, could we potentially incentivize ADUs? And, and uh, you know, can we redo our, can we redo our de restricted formulas to allow people to recoup some of that? Cost of an ADU when they sell the unit because it is, it does provide. It, it provides some, the next buyer to pay more because they have a revenue stream, right? So, um, those are things that I think that I'm kind of lumping into. Are there planning code changes we should be looking at?
Yep.
Um, and I think there are. And I think this is gonna be that, that first meeting in June. Part of that conversation you're gonna have with the planning commission as to, and then I think it's a matter of the planning commission and staff. Coming up with a list of what some of those things could look like, uh, that we may want to, do we need to tweak the code to allow for it? Or is it, how do we address some of these things? And I, I don't have those answers or thoughts in my head right now. But I think if, if that council sees that as something that's important, you know, that's something that I would be. Turning over to come dev and say, you need to run with this uh, strategy.
You know, and it's.
There's definitely some ADU discussion we need to have around, you know, mortgages for homes that have an ADU. Lori and I were on a call where we heard some information that it's harder to get a mortgage if you have an ADU that's, and I. Honestly, I didn't really understand it as much, but you know, maybe we can get some clarification on that. The other, the other thing I'd really like to talk with the planning commission about is. You know, my, my hesitancy on ADUs, as you've all heard before, is that while you can. Restrict who can stay there, you can't make people stay there. So, you know, a lot of times. My worry is, well, they're gonna build an ADU and then it will just sit empty. In the meantime, what have we given to get that ADU? And really done nothing other than create another unit in a home that, you know, maybe they, somebody stays there, maybe their kid stays there when they come to town. It's hard to regulate that kind of stuff. Um, and that's something I'd really like to have a chat with the planning commission about. Because obviously ADUs work if you utilize it the correct way, but, but if they're not, I don't know why. Heck, are we all of a sudden? So.
What if, um, well, I guess this is, I was gonna say, what if we required? The ADU to be entered with a management company and then it could be long term, it could be managed and rented by them. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that, but that's something worth looking into.
But I agree with Eric. I've heard some weird things about if there's a deed restriction on the ADU, then the property is deed restricted. So maybe it's just some clarification of the language. I don't know, but I would really like to clarify that language so that it's not a hardship. Um, if people wanna have one.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it really either, even outside of a hardship, it's just, it would make people say, well, I don't want to do that, right? I mean, that's, that's really a big part of it.
And I definitely would love to see staff spend some more time on this. And in particular, like you said, there would be some considerations. In the de restricted neighborhoods where I think some higher density. Housing and A D U use would be really beneficial, and I think it it would fit nicely. So if. Whoever planning or is looking at this, you know, if they could kind of. Look at density or whatever issues, or I guess also incorporating the cost into the resale value, some of those issues that are more specific to deed restricted. Units and let us know if that would work. And then I'm not sure. How other people feel about this, but. I have sort of wondered if if we should have a bit of a looser. Deed restriction on the A D U such as maybe twenty hours of work in the. In the community or. I came up this with this one for the Summit Foundation that we require that they like join a board or do some volunteer work or something. I don't know, just the because I I do think I hear time and time again, well, my parents want to retire retire there or. You know, there's a different, I think, segment of our population who might be older and aging out of the workforce that. It would be great if they could use an A D U. I mean, I I know that that's not everyone agrees with that, but that's my opinion. So I don't know if there's some other strategies we could employ.
Kelly, that definitely gets to the viability of of the community, though. With people that are community members that live here, maybe they don't work here anymore. Maybe they've aged out of the workforce, but maybe they do contribute. Ten hours a week to a nonprofit and then that's okay. I I think that's definitely worth exploring. You know, we've always hinged everything on working in the community, which leaves. You know, there's a segment out there that's. That doesn't.
Working for free.
Working for free. Right.
Yeah, this whole metric of residents versus vacation homes is is interesting. We haven't talked. I have not talked about this. About housing in that way, and it's starting to. I think it's something to think about, you know, yeah, retiree, yeah, this whole demographic. I don't know how it fits, but I feel like there's definitely a place.
I definitely think we I I would like to look at loosening up the. Viability of people creating an A D U unit, even if it even if some of these units maybe didn't come with parking and that was predetermined. But also, I I think, you know, there is a concern about when they when people build a unit or even if they if they convert it to they build an A D U. That they're not gonna, you know, rent it to a long term, you know, whatever, it's gonna remain vacant. But that's when the enforcement would come into it. And if we could could have a kind of flex that component to allow, you know, because I remember there was a town council guy that. Built a home up in Shock Hill with an A D U unit and he got points or whatever for that. And it was never it was never never occupied other than by his kid. So I I think there. I'd like to see more A D Us like this may get made it easier and also a possibility of of having reimbursement if it's a deed restricted type situation.
How does this work with others? I mean, with other scenarios where if we? If, you know, in a development agreement or whatever, where a business has to. Provide workforce housing. I mean, how do we ensure that workforce housing is being utilized?
Well, we're probably that's part of compliance that is lacking. Because we don't. We really don't, you know, we try to follow up. Typically only on a complaint if we receive a complaint that something is gone astray or isn't. You know, isn't quite working the way it's supposed to. Then we will follow up on that, but we 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 don't have the people and we're not proactive in in how we do that. Right, Lori? I see you shaking.
That's true. And and our current template of our deed restriction does have language in there that they can't sit empty. I think it's either thirty days or something like that that you need to have somebody in a deed restricted unit. So. It's it's a requirement. It's tough to enforce.
And could we apply that to A D Us as well? Like, there isn't anything special of A D Us where.
Yep.
It's just might be more tempting to have like relatives stay there or something like that.
Yes, as opposed to, you know, in some communities, it's like if you don't put somebody in, we will. And, you know, when you've got the government telling you who they're going to put in your A D U that may be attached to your unit. You know, it motivates people to put somebody in there.
Right. But if we're creating the incentives, then I think that's fair, right to say.
That's a fairly that's a fairly new policy, correct? We just created this. If it's an A D U, it has to be a deed restricted. And so I'm not sure. How many have been created, you know?
I think zero.
Yeah, so.
But I think the the problem with that policy, at least at the county level, and we've heard this because I'm on that planning commission. Is that people buy these houses and actually rip out the A D U because they don't want to have a rented or they don't want to have to rent it. And they don't want to be out of compliance. So they tear out the kitchen or whatever. So it's just this extra bedroom. And I just. I would rather see an A D U sit empty while that owner owns that property. And then when they sell it, hopefully the next person. I mean, I would rather, you know, maybe we don't. Heavily incentivize it because we know that some of us, some of these are not gonna be rented by long term, but I don't want to make it so. Disincentivized that people are tearing them out. That's what I think we need planning commissions input on is like. How do we walk that tightrope tightrope?
I think it is a matter of balancing and in terms of tearing them out or eliminating a unit that has a deed restriction on it, you know, our current policy would be. That deed restriction is a it it's on your title. And, you know, it's required to be there. If if you want us to release that deed restriction because you eliminated the unit. You need to replace it with a unit somewhere else. And we we do allow people to move deed restrictions around if they want to. Remove it from one property to another. So I think we have a process to make sure the deed space, the obligation stays there. Or it gets moved to another property.
So that'll be a good discussion with the planning commission about A D Us. And we have sort of the same thing with. You know, we've done some. I used to have this argument with Peter Grosse all the time about dispersed dispersed housing. So there there are homes in the historic district in particular where we've given points. For rooms that were, you know, for whatever reason, I I think of that. There's a house up across from the the Clack Plaster Parking. That was a historic home. It was a bigger than we would have allowed. They couldn't do a lot of things for points. So they did restricted a bedroom. And the argument was this is ridiculous because their kids just gonna live there. So we gain nothing yet. We give points. So. We really need to talk to the planning commission about how we. You know, we're happy to give incentives as long as we get. On the other side. Look, if people don't want to build it, they don't get the incentive and that's fine, too. But how do we incentivize it enough? And then make it so that we don't just get burned for points that we shouldn't have given in the first place. And that's that's where we need the expertise of community development. So. And then anything else that they feel in the code that needs to be adjusted to assist with this problem. You know, there are probably things that we've talked about in the past that we've said. The problem's not that dire right now. But now it's that dire that we really do need to. Potentially give give more points than we used to. Yes, Kelly.
Well, one of the things that I would like us to at least just consider looking at is the size of homes that we've been seeing. So I know that you guys have talked about this and I talked to Julia about it. But I would really be interested in looking at what size. Homes are being built in some of these neighborhoods like the Wise Horn. You know, in neighborhoods that were traditionally. Either locals or long term rentals that are being scraped and. Rebuilt with eight thousand square foot rooms or houses that have. Spa wings that were accidentally called guest houses in other portions of the write up. I mean. Maybe it won't work or maybe we won't think that it's appropriate, but I'd really like to relook at the size of those homes.
Just for everybody's background, you know, Jeffrey and I took a swing at this a handful of years ago. And there, you know, we have sort of two different type of development lot in town. One has a has a either a disturbance envelope or a building envelope on it. Which in effect. Limits the size of the home. That's places like the Highlands, Shock Hill. They all have development or building envelopes on them, depending. What was agreed to at the planning level. There are a lot of older neighborhoods that don't have that and all you. Hang your hat on is is side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks were which are anywhere from, you know, five feet to fifteen feet. So there's no. Envelope. So we passed this. This maximum home size policy, which. At the time, the council was not as supportive of it, so we didn't really get. What we were asking for. We got a little bit. There was a huge cry in the building community. That this was unfair. So we we settled on a home size that was pretty big, but. There there's no reason we couldn't take a look back at that. And let's add that to the list of the things we talked to the planning commission about.
I I agree, Eric, and maybe another angle could be. You know, because I I think the example you just cited, you know, the older neighborhoods with just setbacks. I mean, I'm watching the house going up up the street. They scraped the lot. I mean, the the trees, there's just a sprinkling of trees around the edge of the of the lot line. And and they cut every single tree on the lot except for that. And they're, you know, pretty much building lot line to lot line, it looks like. Maybe we pick a number, maybe five thousand square feet and everything over that. We we have them provide some workforce housing, you know, so every fifteen hundred square feet or whatever the right number is over five thousand. They have to provide a deed restricted unit. It could either be an A D U on property or they could go out in the. Marketplace and buy one deed restricted and resell it. And, you know, so if they're doing an eight thousand square foot house, it would require two. And, you know, so that doesn't, you know, that doesn't shut down the bigger houses, but it. Asks them to contribute to the jobs that those that size home is creating. Into the housing for the jobs that size home is creating.
It's like the time we were doing it as a neighborhood preservation policy. For neighborhoods that had traditionally been in three to five thousand square foot range. That we're now moving towards that, you know, eight or nine thousand square foot range. At no point. At the time had did we talk about workforce housing was strictly all about. Trying to preserve some of the more historic neighborhoods in the in the community.
Sure. And this might help with that without actually being quite as heavy handed and it also helps workforce housing. So I, yeah, I'm I'm all for. Talking about this with planning.
Well, and Dick, I I agree, and I I think there is a component, you know. How I like to compare short term rentals to businesses, but we do have that component with. Commercial space and creating workforce housing. And so I think that this. Would that would align with it, you know, having some kind of a a policy there would make sense.
And and one last piece to talk to them about, I would love to hear their input. On how we can put more teeth in the ordinance around. You know, these great rooms with wet bars and bathrooms and just. You know, easy lock off type units that that sure appear to be future banned at A D Us. And how can we support the planning? And in in creating ordinance or tweaking an ordinance that would would give them the teeth and the tools to prevent that from happening.
Sounds good. That that gives us some good stuff to talk with planning about.
Yeah, it does. All right, let's say the best for kind of the last.
Can I just jump on one thing before we get to this next piece? We're obviously asking the staff to do a lot of stuff right now. And there may be stuff that they need to push to the side. I I think it's this is probably more important right now than just about anything we're working on and we need to. Allow Rick to say, look, we're not going to get to. You know, whatever we've asked them to get to for a while because this takes precedent. Does everybody agree with giving Rick and the staff a little? Latitude to to build time in their schedule? For this critical thing that we're trying to solve? Okay, got that, Rick?
Yeah, I'll let you know when we.
I know you like to work all day long with no vacation, but. The rest of the staff doesn't.
I know.
All right, go ahead.
So, you know, that probably a lot of people have been sitting on this call waiting to hear if the council is at. How your discussion around are we? Do we want to do anything that is going to limit? Short term rentals and that can be accomplished in a number of different ways. You know, there are places out there that will put a cap. On just the the overall number of short term rentals within the community. There are places that will. Put a cap based on a percentage of short term rentals to their total. Housing, which is basically the same thing. And then there's others that cap it by neighborhoods. You know, no more than one per block, let's say, or things like that that have it. And, you know, then then there's the M word that we, you know, we threw out there. Do we? Do we capture some time for ourselves to work through some of this and create a moratorium? We, you know, we've seen and and you see those weekly reports, you know, we're we're losing what? Three to six units a week, it feels like sometimes a little more, but and, you know, that could be. Some of that could be a symptom of people just getting licenses because they're fearful that something's going to happen out there. And that we're we are going to create a cap and so more people, but, you know, a lot of these were. What we call losing a unit is was it being used for something else besides short term when they come in? Every week and and get, you know, a short term rental license and we'll see some that were short term rental before that. Are still, you know, maybe it's a new owner and they're getting a license and then. They typically the majority of them are they were other use. Which is either owner occupied, long term rental or second home. Type use before. So but that, you know, that's still a strategy. We've heard. You've heard from a very vocal. Group in the community that, you know, that certainly aren't supportive of of doing that and they would much rather see us focus our energy on these. Other four to five things we've been talking about all morning, including we've heard people say. You know. Do what you gotta do with fees and taxes to try to level the playing field, but do not. Put a cap on it because you're gonna have a big economic impact to this community. So. Where does a council want to go or do with this right now? And and you may. I I'm gonna shut up here in a minute. You may not be there yet. But doesn't mean you still might need more time, more information. You might be there three to six months from now. I don't know. So.
Rick, with the and I listened to all the roundtables. Did you get a sense of if in the in the real estate slash management community, would they prefer? If we were going to do one or the other, a cap or a moratorium, what they're what did be less angry about?
No, I we. I didn't get a sense of that because I'm not sure we really asked him that. I think. I think a moratorium is typically considered temporary. And so that probably if you were going to do one, if you had an option between those two, I would guess that one that was temporary would be. More likely, but I don't think either one of those were. And it probably for the majority of the people in that industry were an acceptable response. And then there's still ways too. I mean, we've heard we heard from Realtors. I don't want to. I mean, we heard from Realtors that you can have, you could put a cap, but you could still have a program that allowed somebody to get a license with a cap, right? I mean, they could, you could allow if you had a cap in place and somebody came in and said, I want to get a license, they could basically. You know, purchase their way into that license by providing a workforce housing unit. Or something like that. So then that like, you know, that's a significant investment and that. You could develop policy around how that could work. So I don't want to say that lump every Realtor into into a category that they weren't supportive because I think some. We did hear from some that said, there's a problem and we've got to look at some some solutions out there and, you know, a cap could be a solution. And there could be ways to work around a cap also. So.
Fox. I I will tell you that just from my standpoint, I would rather hit these things that we talked about earlier. I think we can get more community buy in for some of these programs that we're talking about. And then if those don't work and. And then if those don't work and we don't get the support for those, then, you know, maybe, maybe there are some other options that we can, we can explore. But I, I like some of the other stuff that we've talked about today to start, you know, start getting to some of these solutions.
I agree that, I agree that all the stuff we talked about today and much of it, I, I would totally get behind, especially increasing staffing on the, on, on that department. And I wonder if there's any way, if, if there's any, you know, that we could suggest we, we put a cap on beginning like, say, July, August first. Another cap, a moratorium, A- August first, we'll say. And that might encourage, um, uh, incentivize some, some folks to get, uh, more involved and kind of get, get to light a fire under the community to, to figure out a, a possible remedy to this, what we're going through right now. Is that even legal?
Well, it's not illegal to say you're going to do something. I think we, I, I, I don't know that you need to threaten them with that, honestly.
I don't, I don't, I don't think of it as a threat, Rick. I, I think it is, as a, um, a seduction.
Okay, well.
So if we're, we're trying to be around thirty-five percent of houses should be residents. And that's something that maybe we as a council haven't agreed upon, but that the community and/or councils have agreed on in the past. And I think the first thing that we, and maybe you guys have an understanding of this, but I don't, is we need to know what we're at right now. The percentage of units in either Upper Blue or Town of Breck that are, that are occupied by residents.
Well, we had, we had two different numbers. We have twenty, twenty-nine percent are occupied by residents. But then in the Upper Blue, twenty-seven percent of the Upper Blue jobs. So I think it depends which one you're going after, but for each of them, we're looking at like a, maybe an eight percent swing.
Yeah, but I think the moral is that we are already short. We're already under what we wanted to be at or what, what we have established in the past was the appropriate number. And then if.
We're within the local residents versus vacation homes. We're still in that original goal from ten plus years ago. But within the goal of working in the community, we're way under. So part of the reason probably the local resident number is still up there. It's the factors we've talked about, remote workers, retired workers. So we still have, we're still within that first goal.
So if we're gaining though, um, about three hundred short term rental licenses a year, that's at just six per, that's about six per week. And we can only build forty-eight units a year. I think there's some math that needs to be done for us to connect the dots because I think we're already short on the number of residents that we're trying to keep living in the community as far as like the proportion of residents versus overall units. But I think my problem with not doing any sort of cap is that we're just going to get further and further behind that goal, which will eventually, you know, massively change, um, the, I think what we've always really thought of as one of the, um, unique values of our community, which is having that large portion of people, residents and workers living in the community. So I guess I'm just thinking if we keep going at this rate, I just think we're going to get further and further away from that goal. And so that's something we, that's a, a decision we need to make, knowing that. Am I making any sense?
Yes.
I, I'm a little nervous saying what we're seeing right now versus what that trend tends to be over an annual period when we, if we do a look back. And there could be a number of things making that current trend happen. Like I said, just because there's a fear that, um, you know, you're going to put a cap. So I don't know that I would. This makes me a little nervous if we start doing the math based on what I said, three to six a week. And, you know, that's just off of looking at these reports we've been doing now.
Where was like fifteen this week? So, last week.
Was it?
I, I tend to agree with your, your statement. However, I was encouraged by the roundtables and the level of collaboration. A little discouraged with, with some of the, the voices, the letters floating around the community. I, I think those with, with agendas that, that we're not talking about, we need to really just rise above and move on. But, uh, you know, I, I, I agree with what you're saying. I, I would like to try to take a collaborative approach and build on the roundtables and try to bring community members to the table and be part of the solution. And, and try some of these incentives, some of these ideas we've talked about over the last three hours with a real sense of urgency and not ruling anything out. You know, I'm, I'm, I, I guess before we get too heavy handed, I really want to try to bring the community together and be, be more collaborative with, with the business sectors in a realistic way. I mean, this has to be realistic. And, um, see if we can come to some solutions, um, through a number of different tactics to, to, to stop this trend and, and move forward. But, you know, I, we don't have, to me, I feel a great urgency. We heard that from two of the roundtables loud and clear that there's a, there's a crisis and there's a real urgency. So for me, I'm willing to give it a try for a while and, and, you know, work hard and try to work quickly, but, um, you know, leave all options on the table.
I'm really in Dick's camp. I, we've talked about a lot of good things today. And I'd like to use all of them, but I don't want to take anything off the table. I think we need, we do have that sense of urgency, but, you know, a cap is definitely something that may come to down the road, but let's, let's explore all these possibilities. Carol.
Yeah, I don't want to take anything off the table. Um, Rick had a good point, not looking at what's currently happening, but trends, the trends are troubling. The market is not going to equalize. So I think we presented some great solutions. At the same time, we know from the housing assessment from just trends, short term rentals do put pressure on the housing market and displace our workers. So, um, of course, I would love these incentive based approaches to, um, to work. But at the same time, I think, um, I'm not necessarily going down that path, but I would like to know what a zoned base approach could look like in the Town of Breck. I know staff has a ton of their plate right now, so not necessarily a priority, but I do want to explore that option.
Jeffrey?
Oh, I was just getting a bug. I got a little fleas in my house. I don't know what the hell. At any rate, I, I mean, I can see where we're going with this. Um, I think I'm a little bit more ambitious, I, I regret, no, I'm more aggressive than, than the consensus right now. But, uh, yeah, I'll, I, I do think, I think the roundtables was encouraging some of the other stuff we thought brought, brought up today was, was, um, positive. I'd like to keep, uh, you know, kind of err on the side of incentivize, but I'm not afraid of, uh, uh, looking at a cap or a moratorium. Uh, I, I don't think today's, it's going to happen, um, as far as the, uh, but, uh, that's, that's where I'm kind of leaning towards.
Kelly.
Rick, can we work towards getting, um, an understanding of how many units we might need to gain back? I, well, and maybe we'll agree to use the thirteen hundred or eleven hundred units that we need today. Uh, there are just a lot of different numbers as far as employees that work and live here or residents, um, or unit, workforce, workforce housing units. And I think we, we need to have a goal, like a real, even if it's not one number, like a range or a proportion or something that we can work towards really diligently. And, you know, if we see that the gap is growing or that we, we're not going to be able to make this goal, then we can make some bigger decisions. Do you think that we can get there?
If I know which number, are you talking about the thirty-five sixty-five number or the, we want to, or you want, yeah. Uh, that would probably be, Lori, chime in here. That, I, I want to make sure we're clear. Um, this is not an absolute science, right? You guys have all figured that out. We, you know, we, we base these numbers, we derive them from these assessments that we do. Um, but, but it, it, what validates it is that we, there's kind of a sim- similar methodology used every time. So when we see that we're dropping, then we believe that yes, we are dropping in that. So Lori.
Yeah, um, I think, you know, I think the numbers, there's two different numbers in general. I mean, there's the number of housing units and how the housing units are divvied up between resident occupied and vacation. And, um, Carol was right, you know, the, the recommendation is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five percent of the housing stock should be local occupied housing stock. And right now we're at twenty-nine percent. So, you know, we're kind of in the range, um, we're towards the lower end of the range. Um, we're definitely dropping, um, with time. Um, it's decreased. Um, and so, you know, in terms of trying to get that number up, I think we could quantify that. I could, I think we could quantify exactly how many units we'd need to convert in order to change that ratio of resident occupied to vacation. Um, the goal around how many of our jobs, um, are filled by people that live in the Upper Blue. You know, that's that forty-seven percent of our jobs filled by people that live in our community. That's the one that has dropped significantly from the sort of target of forty-seven percent down to twenty-seven percent. And that's a harder number to get. That's a number that requires surveys. There's not data out there to show where people are commuting to, where they live. Um, so that one's going to be a harder number for us to set a specific target around. But I do think we can set a target of, you know, if we got X number of units converted from long term to short term, you know, then we'd have to, um, take out the ongoing conversion that's going the other way so that we can get to a net number, um, and, and see, um, what gets us, um, at a place where we feel good within that range of twenty-five to thirty-five percent.
So let's try to quantify, Lori, what we think it might take to be, get us closer to thirty-five. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It would be X number of units if we didn't see any loss. And it would be X number of units if we assume a continued sort of conversion the opposite way. I think that's a number we can get to.
So let's then move down the path of building, compliance and licensing, conversion and code changes.
Yeah.
Start. You know, one of my problems with a cap or a moratorium is we don't necessarily know what the effect is because some of these, some of these homes don't, wouldn't do anything for us. They're homes that were bought as second homes or they're being purchased as second homes. They're not going to be long-term rental anyway. I still don't, we don't really know what that number is. So I, I'd still rather try these things with the support of the whole community to try to influence, you know, what we're already doing, some things we need to start doing, um, some help with compliance checks and things like that. And then, you know, if, if that doesn't work, there's always other avenues we can explore down the road. But for now, I think this is the proper path to try to get to this solution, you know? I mean, we just got a Q and A that why don't we just stop the licensing right now? I, I honestly don't think we even have enough information at that point to know exactly what that will even affect. I mean, if you stop licensing and what is that going to gain us? It might be net zero for us and we get nothing out of it. So I, I really need to understand that before I think we can even talk about that kind of stuff. Where these other things we've outlined today, I think we have, we have good numbers. We sort of know where we're going. We know what we're building. We know we have compliance problems that we need to get to. We really want to see if we can make some conversions happen because even amongst the lodging community, we have heard that the numbers between short term and long term rental are not as big as we originally thought with some units. And then code changes, I think will be a big deal. And I think that we have, I think before we started this process, doing some of the things we're talking about doing would have met with resistance, but because I think we've really highlighted a problem now, I think we have much greater community support to go down this path today than we would have a year ago. So I think that was an excellent discussion today and, uh, we've just heap more stuff on poor Lori's shoulders.
Well, the other thing I'll point out too is, you know, this, while, while we went three hours and fifteen minutes, the county went, you know, four hours, but it was a very similar conversation. So there is, there is, um, momentum, you know, in these strategies, not just being Breck, but, you know, countywide strategies that I think you can get behind. While we, while we, you know, are pretty close to almost three, three, I think, really looking at people that are pretty close to going to the next level or looking at, at some more stricter rules around it. Uh, we're not seeing that same level of support outside of the Town of Breck. And it's really not being discussed at the county level right now. And the other things that we are going to move forward with are being discussed. And so there is some momentum for us to really collaborate countywide, uh, with some of these strategies, I think. So.
Anything else? Rick?
No, we'll be, uh, we'll be, I hear you loud and clear that we want to, uh, there's a sense of urgency and we'll be, uh, having some internal meetings and we'll be doing, uh, report outs and, and, uh, you know, working closer with, uh, certainly this one committee that's already being formed, so.
And any other committees we need to form that we need to put council on, I think everybody understands the need for what we're doing here. And I, I think all of us will be available for whatever to get this done.
You know, I'm a little concerned, Eric, about this joint meeting with the planning commission and how that, I mean, I think we have that scheduled for the first meeting in June and, uh, you know, our, our agendas are still packed with a lot of different things. And so I'm really concerned about, because I could see that, I could almost see you guys being an hour to two hour joint meeting.
Well, Rick, the other problem is we've just lost the chairman of the planning commission.
I know.
Um, you know, I wonder if we should give them a little time to get, get back up to full.
You know, Eric, maybe, but I think this is important. I think.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll work around that. So.
So anybody out there listening, we are going to be, uh, looking for planning commission, two planning commission members. Um, Ron Schuman is going to be phasing out and Lowell, um, has moved to Boulder. So we're, we're short. And that's a great, there's a very important part of what we do as a, as a local government is the planning commission. So anybody interested, please, uh, let us know. All right. Thank you, everyone.
So we're meeting Tuesday in person, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to go shopping today. Will, will we be serving dinner?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. Yeah, we'll be having. Eric, I, I'd just like to thank Lori and, and her team for all they've done over the last twenty years. I mean, we've got huge challenges ahead of us, you know, and maybe Aspen's ahead of us, but that's about it in mountain communities that I've seen as we've looked at what everybody else is doing. And Lori has just, you know, kept us ahead of, of so many of these things. We could be so much further behind. And I, you know, the more I work with her on the housing committee, the more impressed I am. And I, I just really appreciate the work, you know, the, the whole team.
Thank you, Lori.
Actually, right.
Well said, Dick.
Second, third and fourth. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you to, uh, everybody that was in the audience today, listening and, uh, chiming in a little bit. And, uh, hopefully if you're out there and you are, interested, you can help us with these things we're trying to do. If you're in lodging or real estate or property management or whatever, um, you know, this conversion of short. You know, this conversion of short-term to long-term will be a really integral part of what I think our success could be without, where we use incentives and, and, you know, rather than other things to, uh, to help this situation. So thank you to everybody that listened and thanks to the council for taking, um, the morning to, uh, talk about this.
Peace out.
See you next week.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourned. All right. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.